Let me know when you're ready. All right, well now call the special budget workshop to order for July 26 at 9am. Please rise for the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Invocation given by Deputy Mayor Jim Bernard.
I'm a United States of America.
Madam Clerk, feel please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Councilmember McGuire?
Here.
Councilmember Taylor?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Here.
Mayor Anderson?
Here.
We have a form.
Thank you. All right, first up we have the infrastructure fund.
May.
Melody?
I just wanted to thank everyone for being here on a Saturday morning. I know it's it's rough when we have jobs and families, so thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
I'd like to make a slight change to the agenda. If we could move number one to after number six.
Okay.
So we'll begin with the CRA funds.
Perfect.
And that's page 12 in the printed packet.
Is there that on? I can't see that. So our revenues for the Main Street pound are projected at $578,450. We have a balance forward of 1.3 million. So your budget this year is 1.9 million. This is a detailed by line item, and this is a little different this year. You'll see some things in here. We've expanded on what the line items are and put more information in there for you all to see. So really, the top portion is just our all of our personnel costs and benefits. And then if you go down to the facade grants and the demolitions, I just dropped some numbers in there to wait for Jessica to have her town hall meetings. So she may have some more information that she wants to share.
Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
Okay, so like I she I've only filled in the facade grant demolition, mall beautification, signage, and special projects. And so based on our Main Street workshop that we did, I took a lot of those comments into consideration and where we're at in particular projects right now, like Donaldson Park. So the way I broke this down is let me get back to that screen. So facade grants, because we're moving to a new grant cycle this year, I would like to put a little more money in there. I hope and anticipate there'll be a greater participation in those programs, especially moving up the residential facade or the commercial facade grants up to $50,000. I'm hoping we get a few really good projects on our books for this year with that. So we have some more community participation with those match grants. So if we can get even three or four of those on the books at, you know, 150, $200,000 of our grants, then we have over almost half a million dollars of improvements in our downtown district. So I put 300 in facade. We really didn't get any demolition this year on the books, so drop that down to 50,000. Mall beautification, based on our conversations around lighting and audio on Main Street, as well as the landscaping beautification projects, I moved that up to 300. And signage, I know we talked a lot about signage in terms of, we can't really do anything with the necessarily the entryway into Main Street until FDOT transfers the ownership. But we can start on our way finding signage program to start branding our downtown in a more efficient way. So I and our gateways that are within the CRA districts, obviously CRAs cannot fund the gateway signage that is outside of the CRA districts, and some of those are on the city limits. So the gateway signage at 250 and then special projects is allocated all the rest, which is about 1.1 million, a little less than that. And so 800 of that being Donaldson Park, which we will talk about next month with the bids that came in. 125. Let me go back to that screen. 125 for Walnut Park. We had a long conversation about that, so I would ask council to consider moving forward with the pump truck idea. The water mural down there and potentially maybe some soccer fields, just making that a more residential area park within our downtown district and connecting that at some point to the mall. I know we talked a lot about that as well. So 125 for Walnut Park. And then I have 50,000 for banners. CRAs can fund banners as long as they do not promote private business. So, you know, if we can get some beautification projects in terms of banners, that's a really easy one, so 50,000. And some technical assistance, consulting, branding, things like that. So yeah, that's the 1.9 million. It went really fast.
Any questions?
I just have a question. So we usually apply for those Firdapp grants for our parks and things like that. I know we have to match it. Can CRA funds be used to do the matching portion?
They can't. They can, but our grant administrator Fred Fox says that we don't have to have a match. We're a ready community, so we don't have to provide a match. But if we chose to, we could use CRA funds.
So could we use those grants then to pay for some of these projects, like for Walnut Park and Donaldson Park and all that kind of good stuff?
We can. We have to budget it that way. So if we want to include those in the capital projects, we can include those in there. Because if you include the Firdapps in the capital to get points when you apply for the grant.
Right.
Obviously, anything we can do to maximize our potential of getting grants, that's
right.
Essentially free to us.
With Jessica, and we'll include some of these in there.
Okay.
Yes, sir. You have questions? Name and address for the record.
Dixon, can you hear it?
Yep.
Dixon, 507 Tulane.
I think the handheld is the one that's.
My question is, is budget worked off every little back and forth? Currently, what's our due date on the facade grants on Main Street? Have you guys been? We have. Or less?
I do not have that information today.
Okay. A pretty good amount there for facade grants. I would ask that the council going forward, make sure that facade grants, they follow the regular procurement process, the three quotes and everything else. I would ask that you that you do that. Also, look at, you know, whether how they go about the procurement of that. Right? So that's a very important thing, you know, three quotes. If you're going to actively take part in the process of soliciting quotes, I don't think you should be voting on it, anything like that. Then you also, you know, just pay attention to every aspect of the facade grant, right? So that's that's my that's my thing, so it's across the across the lines, Main Street, South Side, the whole group. Artwork, I think with the opening of getting ready, you know, it's moving along quick with the baseball museum. I think focusing on that theme and getting some artwork out of Main Street. I think that would be a great thing with the gateway improvements. Talking about the signage, I think that would be that would be excellent. Yeah, I think I think that looks good. Otherwise, I think it looks really good. Good job.
I'm sorry, I thought it was on, but anyways, it doesn't mean it doesn't work out, but we definitely got to have at least two qualified, and I have no objection to having three qualified. But sometimes it do have an issue with us getting people to make bids, especially like ones for, you know, $5,000. It's kind of tough, but I understand where you're coming from. I think more is better, and I know that CRA Advisory Board have talked about trying to come up with a list as well as the city, trying to get county lists of vendors that might have applied to. So in the future, we may be able to grow and get those three qualified bids, so that's not a bad idea, but thank you.
Yeah. You look you look at your numbers, you're always right around the $4,900 number, and it's always the same bidder. Two same people bidding.
Yeah, we're aware of that.
Keep an eye on that.
Absolutely. Thank you, Jason.
Moving on.
Hey, our South Side revenues are projected at $486,850. We have a balance forward of 33400. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, so our South Side revenues come in at $486,850. We have a balance forward of 344,000, which leaves 831 for your budget. And again, the top part is just our salaries and related benefits. And we just dropped in some numbers. Again, Jessica can give us more information if she wants to.
Our next South Side budget, again, the this the detail for this came from the workshop that took place on July 15th. And what the citizens stated that they would be more interested in in terms of using these dollars in their districts. We allotted $110,000 for facade grants this last year. It was moved up to 150 when the community garden was eliminated, so that made it 150. I am recommending bumping the facade grant up if we go on this cycle and this block blitz to 200,000. Again, that gives our commercial spaces down there a chance to match those funds at 50,000. And if we can get several blocks interested, that would quickly eliminate that fund. 50,000 for demolitions and then the remaining balance of a little over half a million dollars. 50,000 would be used for a fishing pier at Lake Tulane, 50,000 for Ben Hicks Park Fishing Pier. A seawall at Lake Tulane is about 150,000. They were interested this year in bringing back the idea of the community garden, so allotted 50,000 for that. 50,000 for banners, that is something they feel very passionate about in that district. And wayfinding signage, if needed. If not, we can bump that down to Memorial Drive landscaping and furniture, meaning benches and lighting and things like that. More permanent but decorative features that just elevate that space a little bit coming into that corridor. And they talked a lot about a community center. So I allotted 50,000 if we wanted to start the rendering, research and analysis, technical support, the viability of that, if that is something they truly want to add at some point in the South Side district.
Did we ever look into the FWC grant for the piers? The docks?
No, I have not.
So I think we can get, it's either 75 or 125,000 per lake you can get. And so far as I understand, it's never exhausted every year. It's been pretty easy to get for the counties.
Okay.
Okay, moving on.
Okay. Can I ask one question just real quick? Sorry. How do we, how did you go about allocating these certain amounts? Because like the Main Street, you put in additional $70,000 for revenues, but the South Side one went up 200 and what, $30,000? How does, how did we allocate those different amounts?
Or, I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
For the revenues, the Main Street revenues went up about 70,000. South Side revenues went from 249,000 to 486,000.
So the the revenues that we get for the CRAs are based on the ad valorem tax in the property in that area. So that's why the airport is so much less because of the size of the airport and the value of the property.
So the ad valorem taxes are increasing that much in the South Side to increase their budget?
Correct.
By that amount?
Okay. Yep. And again, that's that's based on a six mil, which you guys will have to decide during the general fund presentation, what mil you want to go with.
Okay.
I have a question, Melanie. With the new Hopewell Child Development Center and the new ABC Supply Roofing, is that included in the reason why it went up so much? Or we won't see that until a year or two later?
So we we get our property values from the county. And our property values went up about 60 or 56 million this year. But I don't have, I can ask for the breakdown, but I don't have that breakdown. I can get it for you.
Okay. No, I was just, I was just curious is when Brittany was asking you, what was the difference and why did the South Side go up so much? And I thought just I just thought that those two was already included in there, the two buildings, the two constructions that take that took place.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know the answer to that. I'd have to get that for you.
I think that ABC was already opening and operating this year. They just had the grand opening a month or so ago. But I think they had been in business for a while, so that probably was included already.
And I can get the breakdown for the next meeting of the property value increase on each one of the CRAs. So I'll bring that forward next time.
Okay, sanitation?
We're going to Airport Fund.
Oh, Airport.
Sorry, you got a skip. I'm sorry. The airport revenues are projected at 25,190. We have a balance forward in that fund of 220,000. So that that gives 245 to be spent. And we have very little expenses in this fund. And we have put in 14,000 for demolitions, 100,000 for signs, and 129,000 for special projects. And I don't know, Jessica, if you have any.
Our airport workshop is scheduled for Tuesday, so I'm hoping there's at least a decent representation from those that are curious about Dura Martin and that care about the improvements there. I I don't know what needs to to go on out there and what they really want, so I'd love to hear from them. There is 100,000 in signs. And I guess I'm curious to hear from you, is there a need for signage in that corridor?
Yeah, I mean, it would be up to the airport people if there's anything that we need to have out there for FAA or anything like that.
In terms of your wishes, if the air or if the city owns, I guess that city-owned property for the most part, right? All of the airport district. Does the bulk of that money need to go to Dura Martin? Or do we want to allot funds for demos out in the airport signage on city property?
Yeah, I mean, if I was, you know, just thinking practically, I would look at, did the FAA, I think we just had an inspection recently. Danielle might know. There was probably, if there was any deficiencies that CRA money can be used for to help out with, that doesn't have to come out of general fund. That would obviously be great. I don't know if lighting seems to be a constant issue or something. But if there's any signage or anything like that that they require, then let's do that first, in my opinion.
Yeah, we actually have a meeting with FAA next week in Orlando.
Yeah, so I would take care of the needs first, and then after that, we can decide what the ball leagues that uses fields have no short list of things that they would like to see out there. So the money can be spent in a flash, I assure you.
I think they're also, the Advisory Board talked about demolishing one building, been out there existing for a long time. And they suggested that we look at demolishing that one building because it's a, it's an eyesore. That's something. And I have a question, I don't know, I agree with the with the mayor, so I think the majority of the money should go towards the ballpark. I know they've asked for more bleachers, shade covering over the bleachers, maybe some places for them to sit while they're having a snack or a meal. Can we use any of those funds to build additional hangers out there? I mean, I know that the FAM is managing leasing the airport, but the airport still belongs to us, the property. Can we add CRA funds to add additional hangers that I think are full?
I think the FAM's lease mandates that they do any improvements out there and keep up the maintenance of that facility.
But that also could the demo of a building?
I believe it would.
Okay.
Yeah.
Maybe the the CRA attorney can verify all that information.
Sure.
Because we even have a Firdapp grant for Dura Martin too, so that's an additional 200,000 that can be used.
That's wonderful.
And then we wouldn't have to use the CRA funds.
Obviously, our young children, baseball leagues are doing fantastic. Last several years, we got state champs and that thing, and we all need to be proud of all of our children. I can't wait for them to get into the high school league, so we can maybe get back to having high school champions again. But I definitely support anything to do with, I don't know what you call them, middle league? Or they got so many different age groups, I can't keep up with them, but they're all doing fantastic. And I can't wait for them to continue even this year towards championship to state, so thank you.
Councilmember Bernard? I'm sorry. The CRA owns that home out there on the property, so we could use that money to demo.
Thank you.
Chris Towney, 109 East Main Street. Yeah, that was I was going to bring up. I think we said 15,000 or 14,000 for that property. And Jessica, if I'm not mistaken, we were going to do something with signage out there? Gateway signage coming in, because that's the first entry point off of 64? Is that something, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, is that something? I didn't bring my notes with me for that, but I think we talked about that.
Yes, I don't know, and maybe you're okay. Is that the city limits? Do we want gateway signage in CRA districts or the city limit area? And are they both?
Right, so Bill Jarrett, Rick Hayes, and I, the Advisory Board discussed that and weren't sure if that was a to be direct, if that was a point of, hello, you're in Avon Park now. Like, is that the point? Or if you guys can shed light on that at all? I think that's kind of what we talked about, having that be the first, hey, you're in Avon Park now, kind of thing.
I think it's wherever the heck we want it to be, right?
Right, that's kind of what we were thinking too.
Whatever looks good.
And I don't want to speak for the rest of the board, but I think that was the discussion about that. I think you're going to have a pretty good discussion over there on Tuesday anyway. You have a very vested interest in a couple of people that talked to me about it. So I think that was the key point. We were trying to capture the essence of Avon Park on the entry from 64. So I thought that might be something that we was included, if I'm not mistaken.
I like that idea too.
Yes. And I wasn't sure if that's not, I think that's a CRA thing way, right?
If it's in the CRA district, that's that's what I was going to say, is wherever that border is, that the CRA can start paying for the sign and stick the sign there.
Right.
And Jessica, the city leased building, the old back boat factory, which is held by the Kaladian Factory now, is that the CRA district?
Correct.
I would like to see if there's money available, and like Mayor said, we probably will need to work on the need first and then get our wants later. I would love to see some, because it's not the most prettiest building to look at. Maybe some murals on that building?
Sid Berninas and I have discussed that. So and again, knowing whether we want to continue investing in city property for private lease, I guess is a question for the board.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Before I allow that, I did get public comment through the chat on Zoom. It was a studio, H Benita Studio, they own a business on Main Street, I believe.
Yep.
And they just wanted to say that they recommend doing signage on historical US 27.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Jason Exon, 507 Tulane. Yeah, it's Bill Jarrett. He was, he was one of the main people pushing for the signs, and I agree on the corridor coming in. So I think that's an excellent use of the signs. I know in Firdapp, it's kind of been caught in the title and everything else. Hopefully, you know, maybe some CRA money can go out there, can make it move much faster, and you can have action on that this year. That would be absolutely excellent. But yeah, and and you look at your identifiers on, you know, you go to the property appraiser. That's right, right over this county, county property, when you look out, starts with a C, A, you know? So on that side where the airport is, that's where you have, that's where county property, but that would be a great place for entry signage, save y'all some money.
Agreed. Anything else on Airport Fund?
That's all for me.
Seeing none, moving on sanitation?
Actually, we are going to do the Airport Fund.
I'm just going to keep on pushing until we get there eventually.
We'll get there. Okay, as you can see, our Airport Fund revenues have decreased quite a bit. That's due to the lease with FAM. Right now, our total revenues are 126,500, and we will have to transfer 89,500 from the general fund to cover the expenses in the Airport Fund. Our expenses also decreased substantially to 183, it's a decrease of 510,000. We've eliminated all expenses in the Airport Fund except for insurance and property tax, which the property tax is reimbursed by FAM. And that's the end of the airport.
Anything else on Airport? Seeing none, moving on.
Now we do the sanitation. Okay, so some budget factors in the sanitation fund, as we all know, the sanitation fund does not sustain itself. If we continue with the current garbage rate that we're at, we will lose about $527,000. So we've given you a listing of different rates that you guys could choose from. In order to break even, we would have to go with the 30/50, $30.50 a month on totes.
And we're currently at?
We're currently at 22.
Dr. Kelly, were you able to look into contracting out the garbage like you had discussed?
Yes, I did. For one pickup a week, it would be approximately $25 a month for residents. And then I would recommend that we add some type of admin charge to that, whether it's 2% to account for our time to process these bills.
Did you get a quote for two days pickup?
I did not, no.
Did that include the dumpsters as well?
Well, they would be at a different rate, but the residential rate would be around $25.
But the same company can do everything.
Exactly, yeah, they can.
Did the rates on the commercial dumpsters, were they somewhat similar to what we charge or where did that?
They'd probably be a little bit more, just to cover their costs, but yes.
And do you know how many times they would pick up? I mean, would we have an option of one, two, three, four, or five, how we do now?
Yes, you would have the option. You know, it would be based on per pickup, what their charge is for dumpsters. Commercials handled a little bit differently than residential.
Is that something you intend to bring to us in the future?
If you would like me to get, I would have to go out to RFP. I can't just go with the one company I talked to, but if you want me to advertise in RFP, I can absolutely do that.
Well, I mean, I think it would probably be good to know.
Okay.
If it's not going to cost taxpayers anything to know what we're dealing with and
Sure, we can do that.
Because wouldn't there be a lot less overhead costs, like with vehicles and all that kind of stuff?
We wouldn't have any overhead costs.
So would we even have to charge that full $25 if we're able to have a savings?
That that would be the, it would just be a pass through. So what whatever the company deems is their profitable point, which they gave me a ballpark of $25 a household, it would just be a pass through. We would just bill for them. They wouldn't bill the customer directly. Um, it would just be a pass through. We would just bill for them. They wouldn't bill the customer directly. We we would have no employees. We would have no overhead for the trash department anymore. The only thing we would do is process those bills.
Do you know how many cans we have out there? How many bills we have? Five thousand counts. Okay.
So Dr. Kelly, will you eliminate those employees positions?
Yes.
And where will they go? Will they will be replaced?
They they would not be our employees anymore. They could potentially um, apply with the company that would take over the the trash service, but they would not be Avon Park employees anymore.
And how many we got working in that department right now? I mean, when it when we talk about fifteen, so we would eliminate fifteen positions?
Correct.
And how and how much would this save the city?
Well, right now, if you.
Not to eliminate the employees, I'm talking about switching over.
Yeah, if you don't raise rates to cover the cost of trash service, you're looking at a five hundred thousand dollar deficit.
Okay.
That's how much it would cost. And and I I did, um, can you pull up that one slide? Just kind of zoom in on the trash chart. And keep going. It's over to the, yeah, that one. That's the last couple of years of what you have lost on solid waste. See.
Looks promising.
Right? So this year, I mean, had you not raised rates, you were looking at an eight hundred thousand dollar deficit, but you did raise rates in, I think, October to twenty two dollars. So you only had a five hundred thousand dollar deficit. And now going forward, it it just keeps having to borrow money from the general fund. So actually, you don't even borrow it. You just give it to them. I mean, if it was me, I would have made them sign a loan and at least the general fund could have recaptured their costs at some point with interest, but you don't have that set up here.
So what are the bulk of the expenses? Because I didn't see like an expense. It may be on farther down, but it is.
It's on.
So if you go, you go to that. I see it, yeah. It's on, yeah, it's down thirty eight.
All right. Can I ask you a question to clarify then? Uh, if we would go with uh the bid for a private company, that would save us um upkeep ma- maintenance and buying of vehicles, correct?
Right, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have to lease trash trucks. We wouldn't have to repair them.
And then also we wouldn't be responsible for anybody's benefits.
Correct.
Doing that job. So one last question is, it seems to me like we are always have an opening or two for somebody in public work positions. So there would be jobs opening on a monthly forty basis for some of these people to apply for a different position within the city also. Is that correct?
That's possible. I mean, we certainly don't have fifteen positions open and they would have to apply and have, you know, be qualified for it. But yeah, they're certainly open to apply for them.
So overall, with the savings of those costs, what is the overall savings if we were to go to private?
Well, right now, uh, based on the losses that you're looking at for twenty five, twenty six, it's about five hundred thousand dollars, just on the losses.
Yeah, one last question is, I know the county uses um waste.
Waste management.
Waste management.
Or Waste Connection.
That's not the company we're getting bid from, right?
Well, we would have to go out to RFP.
Okay, where did you get the twenty five dollars from?
It's it was from the company that um the county just contracted with. It's not Waste Management. I think it's Waste Connections.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Dr. Kelly, my next question is, is it, it is not the screen. I think it's the screen before that one. They were saying that um um, last year, was it changed to twenty two?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, December of last year.
Something like that, yes.
And so um in order to um.
You raised it to twenty two, but you were still so.
We was.
Prior to raising it to twenty two, you were losing eight hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
You raised it to twenty two and then you were only losing five hundred.
So what would we have to raise to thirty to break even, but make it, you know, make some money off of it as well?
Thirty dollars and fifty cents would get you to break even.
Thirty dollars and fifty cent to break even.
Yes.
So we're looking at about eight dollars and fifty cent more.
Correct.
And we I I we don't want to break even. I I know we don't. I know this council don't want to break even. It would be, it would be nice that if we can make more. So would it would it benefit the city if we raise it more than thirty fifty to keep fifteen employees?
That's that's a policy decision. That's not my decision.
That's a who's decision?
Policy decision.
Okay. I I'm I'm just looking at fifteen employees. That's a lot of people. That's a lot of people out of work. And it ain't easy to find a job here in Eagle Park. And I'm I'm looking at fifteen employees. And I know we got some positions that we probably can. Now, if you had have said, you know what? I'm I'm gonna open up some more positions here and we can move them around and and make it work, but just eliminate fifteen employees? I don't know how this council feel. I'd rather raise the rate up that that to try to hold on to fifteen employees.
Yeah, well, we're talking about, we're talking about two very different things. So right now, we're just considering a budget. Obviously, there's no, just, we don't have any agreements on the table to go in any real different direction. We're just talking about seeing what the prices actually would be because she just got an estimate. We don't have anything hard to even know what it would be. There may be other companies out there that even give a better rate, or that may be the best one. So us deciding what we want to do with our budget shouldn't necessarily take anything that we're talking about in the future into account. We have to budget based off what we have now.
I I agree. Also, one of my concerns is that we are growing at uh lightning speed, and so we're going to need additional probably employees and vehicles to, if we have eight hundred thousand, two thousand new homeowners and and hoping a dozen or twenty new businesses on Main Street, uh, with the help of Jessica and others. So that's something to be concerned with too. And maybe with that help, maybe that would, I don't know whether that would increase that budget or maybe decrease if we have more revenue from those additional homeowner.
I'd see.
I have public comment in the chats as well, when you're ready. So um, this is from uh the same studio, H Benito's Benito's. We have an art project that they intend to present to the city. They also support the idea of keeping employees rather than doing layoffs. Uh, it says no warranty. They would be hired by a new company. They want to know how many new homes for thirty nine dollars. I'm sorry, it's not much clear. And it's all about management. Avon Park is surely growing and is not going to stop.
I agree. Jason?
Jason Exon five oh seven Tulane. So many years, uh, guess three, four years, so start seeing that where it started falling off like you saw. When you hold off on purchasing vehicles, that just expounds, right? So like the way that you kind of get ahead of it possibly, you're gonna, you would end up having to kind of replace your very old fleet, which whenever we replace vehicles around here, you know, sometimes why, you know? But what ends up happening, you keep the the rate low. Now all of a sudden, those vehicle maintenance costs and then the amount of equipment breakdowns, which may be a question that you ask, um, it becomes bigger and bigger. So the thirty fifty this year, and then city will very likely next year be thirty five, and then the next year it's going to be forty. Because you 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 choked it out, basically. You choked out your fun. You're like, hey, we're good. Now it's time to fix machines at industry wide or five year vehicles, five years. So if you hold off on that for three to four years of doing anything of of significance, right? Now you're going to get to a point where you have to make it up. So you can't afford to just go out and buy the machine. So you have to go lease. But if you lease, now you're paying, you know, right around the thirty percent or not thirty percent, but like maybe a thirty percent more in total charges. And if you would have just bought it cash outright, right? But you have to have that plan moving along. The cat note, I don't think any resident wants to come in and pay. I don't want to pay forty, I'm here as a resident, forty, forty something dollars for trash. I don't want to pay forty dollars for trash here, right? I don't want to, because it doesn't match it. We've heard time and time again, when it comes time talking about residents, we can't put this money on the residents. We can't put this money up. They can't afford it. And that's why there were things offered up to try to make that up, to make it seem like it was reasonable. But basically, and that wasn't, uh, I don't, I don't know if other public works, people were requesting or asking, saying, yeah, drive the rate lower that way, but they didn't know what was going on in the backend. And but the ultimate decision on whatever reluctance that was to not maintain the solid waste division is what led to today. It's that's what led to today. No other reason. It it was choked out. So, you know, looking at it here now and thinking, oh, what? That's that's based off decisions. And how we look at, you look going forward, what the solid numbers are. You know, we're starting some of the equipment costs are starting to plane out somewhat, you know, like the trucks and everything are right there, whereas they had that big massive like thirty five percent increase. But you still are paying super high rates in in finance charges and everything else. So just kit plus, you know, employee cost and whatnot, but just let y'all know that's that's why. And next year, it's not going to be, it's not going to be thirty dollars. Likely not to be thirty one dollars, because if you want to get your trucks and keep your trucks running, you're going to need, um, you're going to need that revenue to sustain that. In my opinion, okay? Just keep that, keep that in mind. And that's where other companies, they already have it going. They never, some of the private companies never said, hey, let's back away from this for for three years. They have it. They have the mechanics. They have everything else. Sometimes, you know, the employees, it's it stinks. Nobody wants to do it. There's great people out there. Um, but end up in some of these companies, they know that they already know the routes and they'll bring them in. They'll hire them. You know, not saying whether we should or shouldn't. I mean, if it was, if it was up to me or I'd say, hey, you kept that rate and it was at the right rate every year. And then went ahead and just said, yeah, we're we're good to go, you know? Like they talk about the compensation studies and everything else and it's, you you had to do that, um, you know, to maintain that that level that you guys were looking for with the with the the personnel, the equipment. This is a service level. You go out, ask them, hey, are you able to do the route? Are you able to run the route with the right amount of trucks and say, hey, we're constantly, we only have one backup truck or we have no backup trucks? So those are things that you have to look at. Um, and not just this year. Look at going forward whenever you guys make your determination.
Jason, I have one question for you. If if we say that thirty dollars would would cover our cost today and you say as we grow, well, if we're growing more homes, they're paying the thirty dollars a month, doesn't that still keep it us as equal?
You you bring more revenue, so there's a time where you can get what you can get out of your employees. That's why there's a push. How many can these trucks service a day? Say a side truck, side loader services thirteen hundred a day, rear loader may service eight hundred a day, but rear loader runs three people. Side loader runs one, right? Now you can go out in that truck and get more. So like if you get a truck because you went over that threshold, well, then you have more businesses and everything that you could take in. One of the cash cows is is the is the commercial side, but here's a good thing. That's ran by one person. One person runs that commercial route and brings in a ton of ton of money. So you know, um, that's some, that's something to think about. Like you can always look and see how you want to do it. Keep commercial, put out the other, keep them both, whatever it is you decide to do. But um that's where you reach those points. It's it's all business. It's business practices. If you run a city like a business, you do pretty good. You run a city like a feel good, you don't do so good.
Okay, then why couldn't we here?
I just want to point out that this break even cost doesn't even, the thirty dollars and fifty cents, it doesn't even account for a capital equipment replacement fund. So ideally, you should be putting aside a certain percent of your revenues into a capital equipment replacement fund, which you have not done, and that's why there's no money set aside to buy the new equipment that Jason's talking about.
Well, let me ask you this then, Doctor. Um, could be possible for us to um have the city do the commercial part where there's profit? And maybe in the future, just go ahead and have contract for the residential as they continue to grow.
We could make that an option in the RFP for them to bid it both ways.
Well, I think like the mayor said, let's just deal with today and then we'll look at the option, you know, starting maybe, you know, at your first of the year.
Yeah, I mean, I think we probably want to go out to RFP. I mean, there's nothing stopping from going out to RFP.
Yeah.
At any time. So I mean, sooner rather than later, and then you even know if it's even an option.
Yeah, I agree.
Um, I have uh one more additional public comment from the same speakers earlier. They just wanted to say that forty dollars would be an acceptable amount in their eyes as long as it was to retain the fifteen employees.
Yeah, I'm all about keeping employees.
So the three hundred and twenty dollars for the GB truck rental, those are the trucks that we're actually having to rent then?
Right.
Was that during just when we were doing like storm cleanup and stuff like that, or that's on a regular basis?
No, that would be going forward. That would allow us to rent two trucks because our fleet is just abysmal.
Okay. All right. So you're looking for determination on the rate that we want to set?
Correct.
Okay. Would uh, I mean, thirty five dollars put any amount of money into reserves that would be acceptable or?
Yes. So if thirty two, we have projected out at a hundred and twelve.
Twenty two.
Danielle's going to calculate it on the floor.
We increased it ten dollars a month for residents and then of course more commercial. Ten dollars a month to keep our employees, that's um, how would you put that?
What about thirty five fifty, Mayor?
So is that your suggestion?
Sure.
Okay, so I'm sorry. Ja- Jay was just saying that there's a statute that we can't go up fifty percent. What what's the limit on the statute?
Yeah, so I, Jason, I believe it's um, I I believe you can't go up more than fifty percent on your, that's where it was at uh, we're at fifteen and went to twenty two, right? That's seven fif- twenty two fifty would have been fifty percent. So, you know, going twenty two to thirty five, you know, that's uh, I definitely take.
Sounds like thirty three is the max.
Yeah.
So you may have a, just keep that in mind. If I I recall correctly, that's that's just something to, you know, whatever is based off.
So thirty two fifty would be safely underneath the fifty percent? So is thirty two fifty acceptable?
Acceptable to me. I need to keep our people.
I think people are going to have a fit about it, honestly. Going up that much when we just raised the rates.
Well, I think we're going to have a lot of fits here at the end of this budget. We've we've only just begun on that one.
So I think our our people are our most important asset, so.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to.
Yeah, we're not gonna, we're not gonna raise rates just to keep someone's job. That's an idiotic notion. Uh, we're not in the charity business. We're trying to make the best use of taxpayer dollars, so.
Right about that.
If there's any way to look through the, you know, the budget and trim any extra fat that we don't need, you know?
Yeah, we have to cut expenses as much as humanly possible.
Right.
So if we went with the thirty two dollars and fifty cents, we would put a hundred and forty.
Idiotic.
Okay. All right. Thirty two fifty, is that what we're going with?
I agree.
I agree.
Okay.
I think it's too high, but if the majority wants to do that, then.
All right, we're not, this is not approved the budget. This is a workshop, so we still have a lot of work to do. But it probably would be a good idea to uh highlight all of the ways that we are raising rates and or mileage and or taxes in any way. And then whenever we get to the end, we can hash out those things as a as a whole. So we'll base it off thirty two fifty and keep on.
Crystal, will you go back to uh twenty nine? We have to go through though. No, we did not. Okay, so our total revenues projected for the sanitation fund is two point. Okay, so our total revenues projected for the sanitation fund is two point six million. It's an increase of one million.
That was based on the thirty fifty though?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Our garbage, excuse me, our garbage is projected at one point seven million. It's an increase of three hundred and sixteen thousand. Crystal Lake garbage is budgeted at a hundred and eighty seven thousand. It's an increase of a hundred and one thousand. Tire pickups stay the same at four thousand. Dumpster fees increased to seven hundred. That's an increase of five hundred and eighty six thousand. Overage fees are at seven thousand, an increase two thousand. Interest income remains the same at forty two thousand. Our sanitation fund expenses are budgeted at two point six million. It's an increase of a hundred and ninety five thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars. I don't know if you guys want to go line item by line item?
Not unless someone asks a question.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions?
Nope, go ahead.
Okay. So that's the end of the sanitation fund budget. Now we'll go on to the general fund. The first thing we're going to, actually Denise is going to discuss is some new positions and, um, some new pay grades.
So, uh, the city is looking to, uh, bring on a grants coordinator. Uh, we, looked at peer cities to see what they're paying for theirs. We got some pricing in on a coordinator versus a manager. Uh, so we, we felt that a coordinator would better suit our needs, um, if it's approved.
Can we speak up?
At, uh, fifty thousand.
Now, is this a grant coordinator or grant writer?
Uh, grant coordinator.
So they don't write grants?
They, they kind of do all of it. They, they would look at all of it.
So they would actually write grants?
In the job description? Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Yes, so they would manage the grants. They would coordinate the grants, make sure we're meeting all of our grant assurances, making sure that before we go out to bid on a grant or award a grant, that we have the proper approvals from say F dot, um, they would also, they could also definitely write grants.
So we, we current, Kim Lee Horn, I know manages some of our grants, and then we also have Fred Fox that manages the grant. So why do we need an additional grant manager? Does Fred Fox not have access to all of the types of grants we're wanting to get?
No, he just does the CDBG.
He does CDBG, Firdapp and the, the, those ones. Sorry. Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, but we potentially have F dot FAA grants. Uh, we have a three million dollar grant that we haven't moved forward with quite yet for, uh, Route sixty four expansion. So I mean, there's a lot of work to do outside of what Kim Lee Horn and Fred Fox do.
Chris Downey, one on East Main, I want to applaud you for that, Dr. Kelly. I, I think, is that it give me enough money for that? Because it's tied to everything we're doing in the city for the grant work. And aren't we paying a price every time we use Kim Lee Horn? We're paying a contracted price for that? I would advise, personal opinion, I know what we're looking at with the grants and the, and the certiveness and aggressiveness that Jessica's doing. I hope that's enough to attract the person that we need, because we're missing out on who knows how much money. So I applaud you, my, uh, to Dr. Kelly for this. I just don't know if that's going to be enough. And if that can avoid the fees that we're probably paying every time we ask Kim Lee Horn for something, I think, honestly, let's just make sure it's enough, even with my opinion.
You know, what I've noticed previously with some of the grants that you've had, you've not taken advantage of the admin fees that are tied to it. So you're able, I know for sure for FAA, you can put in a two percent allocation for admin to cover the costs of staff managing that grant and billing the grant and following up on it. And that would be one way to help pay for this position is to take advantage of that admin line in most grants.
Could I make a comment?
Yes.
So the grants are, the administrative costs are part of the grant. The only thing that they, the grants do not cover is the actual writing of the grant.
Got it.
So any of the Kim Lee Horn and the Fred Fox fees that we pay is part of the reimbursable portion of the grant.
So Melanie, I'm sorry Denise. Who, who did you compare this, um, this salary with? The, the surrounding city or just Google what someone is paying for a grant, to write grants?
We, we looked up a couple of different job descriptions through a Google search to find out what they were paying for their grant coordinator versus grant manager.
And did we do any survey on the surrounding cities?
Not, not the surrounding cities, no. On the rest of the salary comparison, we looked at peer cities. But this one, we'd look specifically for those, that job description. We were trying to see what was out there for coordinator versus manager.
Yeah. Jason?
I had somebody recently, oh, excuse me. Uh, I had somebody recently talked to me a few months ago about somebody that writes grants for another city close by. And because they do that full time for that city, that they would be available as a part-time consultant, like on Saturday, to write grants only, and because of fact, they're already writing all these grants for another city, that they could do this in a one-day part-time job instead of having to hire somebody full-time with benefits and everything else. But I think we might want to take a look at that, because somebody who writes grants only for a professional job and already does it full-time for another location, they already know all the grants that they're writing for them. They could come and write similar type of grants that would basically fit for Avon Park only, and save us a lot of money in that direction.
That's certainly an option that you can look at, but I would say that would be in addition to the grant coordinator. We, we still need the person to make sure that we're complying with all of the requirements of each grant that we're awarded.
Well, I, I mean, have we contacted any other companies that, that do this? It seems like kind of like on the line, along the lines that Jim was saying, if it's somebody like Fred Fox has his specialty, right? So he knows all the grants that are coming out. He knows all the ones we're going to qualify for. He know, already knows what the requirements are, rather than having just some new person come in. If we had more of a consultant type basis, I feel like it would save a lot of overhead costs that wouldn't be our employee and they will be a specialist in those areas.
Can I interject something here? This, I'm way off of grant stuff, but I think a very important part of this is we coordinate with a consultant that doesn't really go out and look for the city of Avon Park. They're waiting for us to say, hey, get this grant. We need somebody here that's looking out for the city of Avon Park, saying, these are twenty grants you can get. This consultant isn't doing that. They're waiting for us to say, get this grant and help us with it. That's, I think, the biggest part to having an internal grant person.
Okay, my next question, Dr. Kelly. I agree with you, what you're saying, chief, but do they have to be full-time? I'm just asking.
There, there's a lot.
You know, they're working for us, but do they have to be full-time?
Yeah, before we get too, too far.
Yeah, yeah, this, uh, chief said it well. Dr. Kelly said it well. This is a money-making position, right? You think of your thresholds. If you had a grant writer that made fifty thousand dollars and brought in, uh, and saved the city an additional two hundred thousand dollars, would that be good for you? You'd probably say, yeah, it's a business deal, right? If you said, got fifty thousand dollars, just say, I wouldn't pay him sixty thousand dollars, but say that sixty thousand person can go get you one point five million dollars in grants and start knocking off some of this stuff. And also grant administration. When there's so many, when, when you get money, you also have to look at what is best grant to get to make sure you're not pumping in more overhead waiting and then having all the requirements to try to, to meet that grant, right? The coordinator is someone who specializes in it. That's a person, like you said, that's looking out for you. You want that, that individual to be there and, and look out for the city's best interest, but at the same token, go and, and make sure that the grant's being followed and everything else. You're going to get, it is going to be such a different ratio of what they can bring in versus what they cost. A lot of the city here, we think about, hey, how much, how much do they cost us? What, what's, what are they doing here? Now, what can they do for the city? How much can they save you, right? If they can turn around and knock some of the, just say the Firdapp or whatever it may be, actually get you into accomplishing these goals and, and getting these, the, the grants pushed through and having big time savings with a plan laid out, that works out because all the grant requirements of trying to, to, to meet the requirements of the grants, that falls on Melanie, right? So end up with, I don't know if she has a purchasing agent yet, but I mean, they're just working and trying to get, um, you know, people to, uh, you know, follow and, and see the, the requirements of the grants. You got grants galore sitting on the streets. You just got a ton of grants. Now it's, now it's at, at any time, this is the time where you need it the most. You turn around, slip up, you lose some money, you lose one million dollars on the grants, and you're going to look back and say, were we, were we haggling over ten thousand dollars as a city? But then that's going to ultimately reflect in your finished product, right? What do you want as a city? The, the good thing about the city is with the income and everything else, that allows you to get so much. So you want it, you want them to be able to go out, get those grants and administer the grants. And the, and the, that position is going to pay for itself far and away. I, I, I would guess probably twenty to one at least, if not forty to one. So looking at and saying, oh, we don't, that's, that's looking at it from a mindset. I don't know what mindset that is. You got to think of it as your city with million, million dollars, you know, I don't know what the budget is at forty, forty million or whatever it is, but you're not, you're not working with a, a one point five million dollar budget. You need someone to come in and be able to get those projects and deliver and help you out with that. And then the people that are out there, they're minister, making sure that the work's actually performed correctly. That's, that's what y'all need to do.
And my understanding too is that Avon Park being, uh, the size that it is, that there are a lot of more extra grants for us available because of, you know, the, the largest grants may go to the largest city, but there's tons and tons of small one that they'll look at small cities under ten, fifteen thousand dollars, realize that they need a lot of help. And so, you know, and I, I see both points, but like I said, I, uh, I'm, I've known somebody that said they could do the job part-time and to bring in millions of dollars in grants on a regular basis. So it's, uh, I guess maybe we do an RFP.
I mean, that's kind of my point is when you're hiring an additional employee, there's a lot of overhead costs that come with that versus hiring a company. So even if you don't want to call them a consultant, it seems like a company may be off, may be able to offer additional resources. And I don't know what that cost would be. It may be more than the salary of this person. But I feel like before we go out and just hire a person.
Benefits.
Yeah, with benefits and all the overhead, and that's our responsibility. That's another responsibility for the city. Whereas if we just had a contract with a company, you know, that would work for us and we could let them know what our, our wishes and our goals and all that kind of good stuff is. I feel like that would be something that we should investigate before just hiring an additional person to work at City Hall.
And so it's a lot easier to, uh, end a contract than trying to, uh, terminate an employee that you.
And, and close out a position.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's just, there's more to it than just writing the grant. It's the admin that they're talking about. And I mean, it would be helpful if, uh, you just simply went back a couple of years and looked at all the grants that we got, what the admin fees would have been and how that person could have, you know, saved the city money there. And that would definitely explain it a lot more clear. Uh, then there also needs to be, you know, benchmarks for that person. You know, the, obviously we know how many, let's say millions of dollars worth of grants we would have to get in order for that person to pay for themselves and to, for us to consider it a success versus an outside company. So that would just give us a full cost benefit analysis would be helpful. But for today's purposes, we don't have to get into all that. We just need to know what is budgeted and, uh, kind of the general outlook. So we don't have to necessarily know every single detail as we go through this.
Well, Dr. Kelly, I assume that you're very experienced and knowledgeable in your previous experience and job title to, uh, know what's best. Uh, so explain to us why you want the administrator, again, one more time for us to, as compared to a part-time or even a consulting company.
Listening to your discussion here today, I, I think you want both of these. Um, the grants coordinator, I know I put in my week in review how the city is now going to spend sixty seven thousand dollars because we jumped ahead and paved the road that we didn't have final authorization from F dot to receive the grant funding for that. Uh, we did the same thing on Gwen Hill, and that's an additional seventy seven thousand dollars because we didn't have a grant coordinator that the city is now going to eat to make sure that we were meeting all the milestones of the grant. So, you know, that additional person would have saved us a hundred and thirty thousand dollars right there. Um, as far as a part-time grant writer, I don't have any issue with that. And then this person could focus on making sure that we meet all of our requirements. So I, I mean, listening to you here today, I think you would probably want a combination of both.
So historically, who has made sure that we've followed these grants? Because we, this isn't the first year that we've gotten grants.
So that falls on the finance department and, um, the, I am the liaison between the funding um, organization and the, our grant administrators, namely Fred Fox and Kim Lee Horn. Um, F dot are smaller grants and do not have, we do not have a administrator for those two grants. Um, and they, it fell through.
And so Melanie, you don't think that you have the right staff in your department to continue with the grants?
If, if my department is going to be required to write grants, no, ma'am.
Then we also get approved for a grant and then lost it because we didn't follow up.
I don't remember hearing that.
Thought there was something.
Yeah.
In their department, but, but, um, I don't know if I thought about, was that thought?
You have a comment?
Jane Benham, six oh five, South Egrid Street, Sebring Flota. But I do want to point out that I really believe that part-time employees give you part-time results. And I think that as your city is growing, taking into accountability and understanding that I don't think you can keep piling on multiple jobs on one department. And I think that that has worked in the past, but considering that if you're giving someone multiple jobs, then what is that person's at that point? And I feel like having a grant writer, someone that would eventually pay for themselves, but also understanding that just because you apply for a grant doesn't necessarily mean you're going to receive it. So I don't know how that accountability would fall. I do understand, like, if they worked under the city, then city manager, someone could really on saying, hey, how much are you paying for? Hey, what grants? It's easier to see what someone's doing when they're underneath versus a company is harder to, I would guess, communicate with. But I do think that offloading the task to someone else would be better for the department, so they can actually focus on what they were actually hired for instead of doing multiple things. So I do think regardless whether you go with an employee or a, um, company, I do think a grant writing position should be something to consider, especially with all the, um, projects, but having someone that can do all of it, not just one individual that does these three, this individual does these three. If you're going to pay for it, that individual should be specialized in all of the grants, so you don't keep on running into those issues.
I, I have one last question for you, Dr., uh, would you estimate that the salary is forty thousand?
Fifty.
It's fifty thousand eight hundred is what we budgeted for.
And, and you got that because of other figures from other areas?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
But with the benefits of seventy nine ten.
Correct.
We got a long ways to go, guys.
I definitely like, I think, definitely think we need a grant writer, period. Okay.
Okay, so the, the next one would be, uh, the community standards director. Uh, this is a uh, new job description for a current employee. And I'm going to ask Dr. K if she could explain a little bit more about the role of this one.
Sure. So this is our code enforcement supervisor. He actually does a lot of work for the planning and zoning. He um, manages all the applications. He interfaces with CFRPC. He makes sure that new businesses coming in meet our standards for not just code compliance as far as how the property looks, but also making sure, you know, that their setbacks are accurate, that they're, they're meeting all of the, um, specifications for building on a lot. So in, in this position, um, it reflects that additional duty that he is doing and in this position, um, it reflects that additional duty that he is doing. And it would be reclassifying him to a director's position.
This is reclassifying, but it's not a new position.
Correct.
You're not replacing the position that he once held.
No, he, it, it just better reflects the job that he's doing now.
Right. So what is the difference, uh, pay scale from what he's at now to what this would be?
Eighty seven hundred dollars.
There you go.
Oh, in my experience, I, I think we have one of the hardest working employees that within the city who's also very, uh, it's complex, as well as dealing with his, uh, people that work underneath of them and keeping them. And, uh, I mean, doing things like going out and looking at CRA facade grants for us and so on and so forth. I, uh, I, I, I know that one time we were concerned about losing Randy, and I, I think Randy is very valuable. And for that small amount, I definitely would be prepared for that.
Anything else on that?
I just wanna point out that we didn't just make this up. This was a, a position that we found in a beach town that represents exactly what he's doing.
Got it. All right, C and D tech times three.
Uh, our current, uh, staff that we have doesn't adequately support our C and D. Um, we have Joe Baldridge is here. Uh, he's our, one of our C and D foremen, and they're requesting, uh, three additional positions to help adequately staff what, what the demands are there.
Okay. You wanna tell us what these three new positions will do? Start with your name and department and we'll.
It's me, so please bear with me.
Yes, sir.
My name is Joe Baldridge. I'm, uh, four hundred Alton Street. I live here in Arrow Park. I've lived here most of my life.
Yes, sir.
I've been appointed a a wastewater collections foreman in the first of February. Uh, just for instance, we got over nine hundred, nine hundred manholes, okay? With a minimum of at least two lines per manhole. You double that, so are two thousand manholes and stuff total with multiple lines. So the additional people is we could run, like, not right now, I can only run the bat con one day a week. Sparing people for other positions. We're also asking for a fog person, which will add to a fats, oils and grease program, which we're trying to get coordinated with to get going. The fats oil grease program will help sustain itself. But the additional staff members, we just don't, we're, we're running, we're spread thin, trying to keep everything together. We try to do, uh, cleaning station collections, make sure the lift stations are being maintained. There's no maintenance programs for the lift stations at the moment, which I'm trying to coordinate and try to get things together with. Uh, there's a lot of things moving forward to help the infrastructure of a very bad situation with this sewer plants or lift stations and a sewer plant we're trying to develop. It's just the help. We don't, it's just we're spread thin. So when we try to do the work and stuff, we're having issues doing the work or completing the work on a timely manner. Uh, we've cut, we used to do lift stations twice a week. Now we've cut the lift stations down to where we do them once a door we do, and what we do painted between pulling for emergency breaks, between pulling, anything else going on. Uh, I know we're using some temps at the moment, but the problem is the temps just aren't trained. And we're trying to get better staff, better trained, better educated to do the jobs we need done. And, uh, Ms. Kelly's been helping out tremendously with that and bringing us around where we can add more education programs and, and training to get these guys to do the jobs we need done. I've not been trained myself. I've been here four years partially. I've basically worked on everybody else's suggestions and help trying to just get me trained. Uh, Jason, when Jason first came in, he was the first one that sent me to a class, even have me give a background of even how to even work on some of these lift stations. So it's helped tremendously, but we need more of that, that kind of help to moving forward in order to meet the city's growing need. Cause as we talked about, it's getting bigger and bigger. So.
I just wanna add on to that, on the water side, um, you know, we have C and D techs over there as well. It's not just sewer.
Yes, ma'am.
But, um, like, one example is, we don't have an out, a valve exercising program that, for the city. So every valve should be exercised on a predetermined maintenance schedule. And what that does is you're twisting the valves, you're opening them, and it helps break free any buildup, any deposits. It keeps your water a little cleaner. It's a requirement by FDEP. We do the best we can. You'll see later on a, um, capital equipment purchase for actual valve exerciser. But these are things we need people dedicated to, not just putting Band-Aids on bullet holes out here, you know, fixing every problem. We need to get ahead of the game and have preventative maintenance programs.
Yes, ma'am. We, we got a lot of valve old, got a lot of, the, the infrastructure's very old. It's not been maintained, it's not been kept up, water and soup. We're finding new valves, we're finding covered over manholes every day. So that's where a lot of shoes comes. You take, fine, we're finding, it develops into a new problem. Uh, exercise is a, a big help. We're, we're exercising now valves when we have to and come to find out that valve is broken. So then we can't do the repair, we have to do it live. They have to go back later on and repair the valves. Just thing with it's both sides. The additional help would better maintain the job as we go forward.
So Mr. Bald, who's performing the work right now?
We have.
Do, is our staff performing?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. We're all performing the work.
And at what level are they performing it? Are they performing it, um, ade- adequately?
Oh, yes. What, not, not, I would say performing at the time that we can maintain, yes, ma'am. But as far as moving need sustain the structure and better improve the infrastructure.
Okay. So when you, so you're asking for three new position and this is a sewers, right?
Sewers.
And, and water.
Water, yes, ma'am.
So you're asking for, what, a total of six?
No.
Three and three?
Three.
No, just three.
No, just.
Just three total.
Three at this time.
So each one of those positions is forty nine, four thirty?
Correct.
Yes.
And so are you gonna what? Send these staff to training and move them up in that position? Or you're talking about rehi- new hire?
New hires.
Oh, well, my, here's my question. If they forming their, if they forming the job at, at a quick level, why would you, why wouldn't you give it to our employees? I mean, what, it look like to me, they just need probably be sent to school or some type of training.
They're, they're all, we already have C and D techs. These are three new positions to augment our current staff.
Yes.
Three branch, just overworked.
So the people that is performing the job now, are they at that level, forty nine, four thirty?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
I have one question for you, sir. A- a- as everybody knows, you've had a lot of emergency breakdowns on mains. A lot of boil water notices, especially lately. Well, these positions and the equipment they have, is that gonna cut back on that and basically get those things repaired before we have a breakage? Because I, I think it's terrible when people have called into the city and say that they got dirty water, or they don't have any water and sewage a problem. Is this gonna be a big, big help into keeping these things from happening before they break down? Is that part of the reason why we're hiring them?
We can't control water breaks. So when that happens, it just happens. Uh, like the other night when we had that big storm out here and the lightning struck that line. Um, I mean, we can't.
That's beyond our control.
Exactly.
But for the dirty water and for the, the exercise and valve program and stuff, that's gonna help cut down overtime to, the biggest issue we have when we go into a water break is cutting the water because it's fed for so many different directions. And once we get in there and we find out that a main valve is broken, a two-inch valve, six-inch valve is busted, we have to, in, in turn, basically repair that live, which takes longer, that takes longer time on overtime. So with the valve exercise programs and the other stuff we're trying to implement to help cut back on some of the overtime and stuff, it, it will, it will definitely help. The complaints about dirty water, that's part of the valve exercising program and part of the helping the infrastructure is what we're trying to build.
Well, in addition to potential dirty water complaints, um, we're required to map all of the galvanized pipes in the city, and we're in the process of that, but we can only do it when they're not handling emergencies. So we don't have people that are, are dedicated to just that project, which is a state requirement. And it's the one twenty water project, if you guys remember hearing about that. So we have to map everyone. And then once we map it all, and this is on the house side too, not just the city's side of the meter. Um, once we map everything, then we gotta figure out how we're gonna pay for it and replace all of the galvanized and pipe. So you know, there's, there's a lot of things that we're not taking care of right now that we should be more on top of, that we just only do when we have time.
Well, going on the, the home side, I, I know that one time we had a potential plan to see if we could, uh, hire somebody that would give a, uh, a discount rate to any homeowner that would ask somebody to come out that has a, a home, you know, eighty, hundred years old to see if they do have galvanized pipes that need to be replaced. And I, I'm sure we have quite a few that are of more than fifty years old that probably might need that. Have we looked into that any further to see if we could hi- hire a company that would do that for a discount rate if they did everybody, most everybody's, uh, uh, testing?
This is the first I'm hearing of that, but we can certainly look into it.
Okay. I, 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 I think that needs to be done also.
And last question for Mr. Baldridge, without getting off the budget topic. Mi- Mr. Baldridge, I, I have a question. You say you've been here for four and a half years?
Yes, ma'am.
And I noticed, that's about the time that I moved back to Eagle Park.
Yes, ma'am.
I noticed there's more boil water today than it's ever been. Was it always that way? And we just wasn't being notified of it? Because I too am afraid to drink the water now. I, I am. And I didn't have no problem drinking the water. I felt comfortable. So my question to you is, was this happening four and a half years ago that you are aware of and we just wasn't notifying? Or it's just happening now and we're being notified?
Well, as, as there's no preventative maintenance has been going on, the, the infrastructure is getting weaker and weaker.
Okay.
That's where we're having, we can't, you know, storms, weathers, we can't predict any of that stuff. But a lot of these programs we're trying to implement is a lot of preventative maintenance. A lot of stuff that we, we find a problem, we're, we're more proactive instead of reactive. And the city's been a lot of reactive to a lot of stuff. That's where we're running into a lot of the issues. If the, if you have a pipe, six-inch main that busts, you cutting ten inches out of, ten feet out of that ten-inch main, but you can't get the water off, your overtime's costing twice what was a faulty valve that we could have caught weeks prior to that. That we could, okay, we need to set this up schedule, let's get this replaced. Same thing with the infrastru- infrastructure with the sewer system. We're having issues with rehabbing and everything else because the, the, the stuff is so old. Valve boxes, their stuff are in bad shape, overgrown. It's just a preventative maintenance we're trying to build with and try to help prevent a lot of these issues, or the longevity of the repair at, moving forward is what we're trying to build to.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can, can I just add one thing before Jason speaks? Um, currently, our staff in that department, we have the two foremen and eight C and D techs is all we have that's trying to maintain this whole program.
Yeah. Jason?
Yes, uh, keep in mind, it's, they go out further than, uh, the boundary. So I don't know if the customers are, we're up around the fifteen thou- fifteen thousand. Trying to remember what the customer list is, but there's a significant amount outside the border out in Avon Park Lakes and, and whatnot. Um, just to hit up something I didn't get up, but I agree, Randy does a ton. Uh, he, he did so much more than, um, code, code enforcement supervisor. What that position at suits him perfect. I think, uh, he definitely deserves it. So, um, as far as C and D tech, yes, it, there's many, um, requirements coming down. I think what Jim alluded to was uh, having a contracted rate from a plumber, basically, uh, going out negotiating contracted rates to replace these, uh, galvanized service lines. Cause you, it's the, the water department isn't supposed to touch on the backside, right? So you get a, you get a, um, a, a plumber, you put out something and then maybe you just give, get the price for them to replace the line, but then you put it on, maybe the homeowner to, um, you know, to dig the ditch, right? And just have that. That's, that's what, uh, you were, you were alluding to, I believe. So, um, but the C and D tech, yes, there's why, why, and to Councilwoman Taylor's, uh, comment, it, this, we went over last year fifty-five miles of two-inch water. It takes nothing to break a homeowner can go out with a shovel and break a two-inch, then you go out to try to turn it off. You're looking for the valves and everything else. It just increases the amounts, right? So doing the valve exercising program, you know, whether it's, uh, the smoke, checking the manholes, there's so much that's required. And that when you think about the, your staffing levels, also think like some of these people wanna go on vacations, right? When they go on vacation, what do you, what do you do? Like, you don't want the water department to go on vacation. You, you wanna have some kind of redundancy there. But, um, that, yeah, that, that position, it's, it's needed. That's where the city gets a lot of its, uh, money and revenue. So, and it wouldn't be coming out of the general fund. And I don't, I don't, I didn't have any check the rates, but I believe it's, if it's the same and you just fund it and you got the money there, I think it's definitely worth it. Um, it's a request. I know Joe is doing, doing everything he can do to, to get by. And it's, it's important. There's a lot of compliance out there. You're supposed to do at least ten percent per year according to the state regarding replacing these, these lines. So it's already been a year. So now you got, you know, now you, now you missed that ten percent. Maybe this year's the twenty percent, right? So, um, that's just something to think about.
Christianity one oh nine East Main. And the think, the thinking is one point five FTE for water, one point five FTE for sewer, cause it's two. It's not just one area we're talking about, right? So it probably still isn't enough. And to get away from the Band-Aiding, I think we need to really consider this. So it's not just the one side. Keep in mind sewer and water, if that helps anybody's thought process.
Moving on.
Okay, so, uh, just as a, a reminder here, we do have uh, five vacant positions currently. We have a public works director, utility manager. Uh, we do have two people in process for those positions currently that have been interviewed and we're waiting on background checks for. Uh, we're still looking for the purchasing agent, a dual operator, and, uh, now a facility maintenance tech. The next section has to do with our grade and step tables. And this is where, um, this year we did do a peer city, uh, salary comparison. And, uh, I requested information from twelve peer cities. Nine responded. Uh, one, we couldn't even use their rates because they only had two thousand eighteen rates. So we didn't even count those. Uh, but of the other eight, when we did the comparison, this is uh, what you see here on the screen and in front of you is what we feel would get our employees uh, where they need to be as far as pay scale. Now, these grade and step tables that you're looking at already include the three percent COLA if council is gonna approve that. But some of the, the biggest changes on here, we do have some of our staff in the wrong grade. Um, we had our parks and sports facility workers and our streets equipment operators making the same as a laborer. And they, they operate heavy machinery. They're out there working, uh, with our machines, and it's a different classification. So to get them equally paid to where our peer cities are paying, the recommendation is to move them from grade three eighty to three ninety. And that's why you see them in red there. Um, with our C and D techs, uh, all we had prior was whether they had a CDL or they didn't have a CDL. And there were two grades established for that, whether they did or didn't for pay scale. Now, we, um, are in the process, as Joe shared, in, as getting everybody up to speed with their training. Uh, they're being certified by, the water side is being certified by the state. Uh, the sewer side's being certified by, uh, FWPC OA, I think, or A. Um, and so we're, we're getting them in alignment with where they should have been all along as far as their training. And so we've, we've created this sidestep as they move through that process. When they get certified, um, they move to the next grade over, uh, to be, uh, equivalent in pay scale with the peer cities. The other change would be, uh, our electrical technician and our, uh, single, uh, plant operator. Uh, the electrical technician should be in a higher pay grade based on our peer city. So we were moving them over to grade three ninety-eight. And then our plant operators, whether they were a single license holder or a dual license holder, we were paying them the same, which isn't fair. And they weren't being paid adequately according to peer cities. Uh, so we. Uh, so we added a, uh, grade three, where what's three ninety-nine now would be for a dual plant operator and what they should be making. And I think if we, if we move to have our employees paid adequately, then our turnover is going to go down. Uh, for a city our size, our turnover is through the roof. And it has been since I've been here and even before. And anytime you have turnover, there's costs associated with that turnover as well. So I think we, if, if council approves, this would get everybody where they should be in, in regards to what our peer cities are paying.
Ms. Denise, I have a question. Do, do the employees know what they, uh, pay grade is? Do most of them just know?
Yeah. When, when an employee is hired in, they receive a job description that tells them what grade they're in. Um, and that information is, uh, specified on the job description for the first seven steps.
And I just want to remind everybody that we don't necessarily look at the cities that surround us, say Sebring, because their assessed valuation is double what Avon Parks is. So they have a bigger pot of money for their budget to play with.
And so one more question, Ms. Denise. So to make sure, looking at this, um, new grade request in the red, in the red where it say ten one twenty-five, let's do the first one, grade three eighty. If they're making an annual of thirty-two, seven, sixty-nine, on ten one twenty-five, they would get a raise of fifteen seventy-five? Is that, is that, no, how, how does that work? Tell me.
So, so a laborer coming in or a current laborer.
Looking at the first one, right?
Yes.
Step one.
Yeah, I just want to, I'm sorry Denise. So the fifteen seventy-five is what the, is the hourly rate of thirty-two, seven, sixty-nine? That's, it's just showing it two different ways, annual and hourly.
Okay.
Any questions? Seeing them, moving on.
Uh, this particular slide has to do with our salaried employees. The prior slide was all of our hourly union employees. Um, our salaried employees, uh, were, were looking to establish new minimum and maximums uh, for their job description, again, based on peer city review. And, um, this, just, just to give you an idea, um, typically this type of review, I, I would think we would do this once every five years. The, the contract AFSCME requires every three years that we look at the grade and step tables. But the salaried employees, this, this is looking out based on peer city review for what the men and maximum would be over the course of the next five years.
The salary that you have listed on here, is this with the three percent COLA or is this, this what they made this year or?
This, this is with the three percent COLA men and maximum. So, so that person in that role may be making somewhere in between that men and max currently. This is just setting what we think should be the minimum and maximum for that phase.
Yeah. But the actual salary that you have listed?
Yes, on the right, yes.
Is that actual increases already built in there?
Yes.
And is it just the three percent or have you bounced around some different?
This, this includes just the three percent with the exception of two employees' positions, one being Randy's. Um, and the other one being even with the three percent, the, the, and I don't remember, I apologize which one, but it's one of the foreman roles. Even with the three percent, they wouldn't be even at the fifty-eight minimum. So we would put them in at that fifty-eight minimum.
Okay. And then is the sanitation supervisor being over the maximum?
Yes. Um, because of the, the three, the three percent, the maximum, um, I believe the direction Dr. K wanted to go in, the, the maximum doesn't get caught up, cut off by a COLA. They would still be entitled to a COLA beyond that, but not a merit-based.
And, and Ms. Denise, when we went to do this salary range, did we go and compare to surrounding cities? Or did we go and compare cities according to, that matched our budget?
We, we compared with, uh, peer cities that matched us, uh, some of them being Marianna, Dade City, uh, Dufuniac, Milton, Lake Alfred, Bellevue, McClinney, and Dundee were the eight that responded.
Okay. And my next question, this is just me. Seems like the, um, the IT administrator, it seems like he's kind of low at the minimum. And that's just me. I just, we, we're talking about an IT guy. This is our communicator. This just keep us up and running. And, and when Dr. Kelly advertised the position, you know, it was very important that he was needed. But as I look at the other salaries, and everybody know IT is important. I just thought IT was kind of low compared to what everybody else did.
I, I just want to point out that the position that was added and advertised recently was the IT engineer one. Not the IT admin.
And, and these salaries are based off of those position titles, what closely mirrors those position titles. So like if it was this title is an IT administrator, which is what Matt does. You do a great job, Matt. I'll be the, the one to second that for sure. Um, but you know, an IT manager, an IT director, those would pay more based on title and position. So, but based on this, this particular position, that was the men and max based on peer city review.
And I still think it's low because as I look, go and look at the finance director and then the finance manager, look at the difference. The finance manager looked like the, the director, she needed a manager, so we gave her one. And I just, that's me personally. I still think IT is up there. I, even though he have a uh, engineer one, IT engineer one, he, he's not getting no more than what the other departments are getting. But yet still, I still see where the IT administrator seems to be below the, what everybody else.
I agree.
And, and we could certainly change that. I mean, it's council's purview, what, what you decide to do here. Um, we could, we could do, even do a title change, make it an IT manager and change that men and maximum and the job description.
If he's willing to work for it, let's keep going. I don't know if you saw the bottom line here, but we're pulling over two million dollars out of reserves. So we got to save money any way that we can.
I think that's, that's all for mine. Oh, fire grades, uh, they're in here? Yes, thank you. Um, this includes the three percent COLA in their grades. Uh, and there's, there's no adjustment beyond that currently because of the, the co, the contract that'll be addressed with negotiations.
Okay. Moving forward with the general fund budget, I just wanted to give you some information on the factors that we, uh, included in the budget. So it's based on a six mil rate. We're taking one point five million from water and sewer fund. We're taking one point five million from reserves. Our revenues come in at eight point seven million. Our expenses are at ten point eight million. We have a health insurance increase of fifteen percent that's budgeted. But we got, um, a renewal from Florida Blue at seventy-two percent. So we're going out, Denise is going, finding other companies that will try to pick us up. Um, we have a three percent increase in FRS contributions, a thirty-two percent increase in workers comp, property and liability insurance, and of course, the increase for the sheriff's office. This is the general fund summary budget. Um, so your general fund budget total will be sixteen point five million.
Real quick, the thirty-two percent for the workers comp property, property and liability insurance increases, is that is that because we have additional equipment and property and those, those went up? Or is that something that we could go out to bid for as well?
So we, um, reach out to the insurance company and ask them what they anticipate the increase to be, and that's what we budget for. But come Monday night, you've got a new, um, uh, policy coming before you that you'll have to decide. It may be less or more than that. So this slide just shows the different categories that our revenues come in at. Again, the total general fund revenue is eight point seven with a return on investment of one point five. And this slide just shows the percentage per category. Um, as I discussed earlier, our taxable value increased to five hundred and sixteen million. It's an increase of fifty-six million.
I just want to note here that, um, the mayor had challenged me to come up with additional revenue. And I woke up this morning, I guess I thought about it all night while I was sleeping, but uh, you know, you do service, as Jason talked about, um, utilities outside the city, and they have to sign an agreement that they would agree to be annexed into the city. And I woke up thinking about all of those million dollar properties sitting on Lake Lotila that we provide services to, but don't get the tax revenue from. So, I mean, that's one option for you to start raising your tax bases to annex in these more high dollar properties.
I, I have one other question too, uh, on these, uh, increased salaries. Uh, have, have we reached the state mandate for the minimum? It was supposed to be by twenty twenty-six already? Okay, thank you.
As I stated earlier, our, um, budgeted mileage rate is six mils. Our ad valorem tax comes in at two point nine million. It's an increase of seven hundred and fifty-eight thousand. This just shows our mileage rate history as compared to Highlands County, Sebring, and Lake Placid.
I, I do want to stop right here. So if you look at thirteen, fourteen through, say, twenty-one, twenty-two, those ridiculously low mileage rates for the city of Avon Park, uh, what you're looking at is almost a decade of deferred maintenance and we're paying for it now. So you got to keep that in mind when you're looking at the budget totals. We're, we're not only maintaining current standards, we're having to fix what was deferred for a decade.
Agree one hundred percent.
Okay, ours, excuse me, sales and use revenues, excuse me, are budgeted at four hundred and eighty-seven thousand. No, I'll just take the turn. And this slide just shows the, um, percentages of those. Our local option gas tax is budgeted at four hundred and twenty-two thousand, which is a decrease of eight thousand. Fire insurance premium is budgeted at sixty-five thousand. It's an increase of twelve thousand. Our franchise fees revenues are estimated seven hundred and fifty thousand, which is a hundred thousand, hundred and seven thousand dollar decrease. Again, this slide just shows the percentage. Electric franchise fees are budgeted at seven hundred and twenty thousand. It's a decrease of a hundred and twenty thousand. And I would like to add, um, Dr. Kelly and I were talking about doing an audit on Duke Energy. Will you see the, the highs and lows here on this graph? They, so when they take all of the, um, revenue that they earn from the city, they take out some people that are some organizations, like the city, for instance, that they don't include in that amount. For twenty twenty-three, they, for about six months, they failed to remove that. Uh, what do you want to call it? Deferred Revenue. So they took it away from us in twenty-three, twenty-four. They did the same thing in twenty-four, twenty-five. So I just wanted to point that out. So we're going to try to do an audit and see what we can find out. Um, gas franchise fees are budgeted at thirty thousand. That's an increase of thirteen thousand. Utility service tax is budgeted at one point three million. It's an increase of twenty-five thousand. And again, you're by percentage. Electric utility tax is budgeted at eight hundred and ninety thousand. It's an increase of ten thousand. Water utility tax is budgeted at a hundred and forty-nine thousand, an increase of nine thousand. Gas utility tax is budgeted at twenty-two thousand. That's a decrease of nine thousand. Communication service tax is budgeted at two hundred and fifty-five thousand. It's an increase of fifteen thousand. Our local business tax is budgeted at thirty-two thousand. That's a, same as last year.
I just want to add that we, I did ask Chrissy to do an analysis of the business tax receipts charges. And unfortunately, we're in line with everybody that surrounds us, so we can't raise the rates there.
Licenses, permits, and fees are budgeted at a hundred thousand. That's an increase of a hundred thousand. And I'll let Dr. Kelly explain this. We're um, discussing a new building department.
So we're discussing the potential of bringing building and permitting in, in-house. Um, we put a hundred thousand dollars in here to maybe capture part of the revenue that would happen if we're able to stand this up by the end of FY twenty-six. You'll see a corresponding expense of a hundred thousand. So it's basically a wash over this budget, but we wanted to plug something in just in case that happens.
Grab sales.
Wait a second.
I wrinkled my eyebrows when you caught it. So, okay.
So you're saying bringing in a hundred thousand, but if we don't have engineers and things like that, that would be expenses. We would have to hire engineers to go over those building permits.
You would typically contract, you could have a contract building department. Uh, one company, for example, that does it is Will Dan. That's who used to run my building department in California and they're here in Florida as well.
So I guess my question is if it's going to be a wash and we're giving out the same that we'd be bringing in, why would we change from using the county?
Because we have no control over what the county does.
As, as far as what part, I guess?
Any part of it. I, I asked for a meeting to understand what the process was over there and I was denied a meeting. They said, can't you ask somebody else how it works over here? So, I mean, I can't even get a meeting with them.
I don't, I don't think that's quite accurate.
That's exactly accurate. I can show you the emails.
Would you like me to drive you over there after we finish here and you can have a meeting with whoever the heck you want?
Well, they're probably closed today, but yeah, I, I would.
Door at home if you need.
I, I received a message from the county attorney that they would not meet with me.
Okay.
I mean, I think that's something we need. You don't think that's exactly accurate. You mean what she's saying?
No, I mean, the notion that you can't get a meeting with the county, no, it's, it's.
I think she said it. She said it.
What was the particular circumstance? Was there any reason for that? I mean, just to say that you can't, that a city manager can't meet with the county so they can better understand what the county does for the city so we can make considerations going forward to how we want to do our building department. It's irrational. Of course you can meet with the county. Of course, whomever you want to explain it to, we'll explain it to.
I, I guess my thing is what kind of questions are you, are you having, are you having questions?
Know what they told her. That's all.
No, I'm not, I'm not denying that may have told her that in that particular situation. I'm just saying that we certainly can have a meeting with the county and they'd be more than happy to explain whatever.
I, I think it's just kind of.
Placeholder at this point while we consider the process.
I, I think it's just a little early to try to put in a placeholder for something that I didn't even know there were questions about. You know, are you having questions about how they are issuing permits or about how they are abiding by like the comp plan or like, I'm not sure where, what's the discrepancy? I didn't even know there was a discrepancy going on. So.
Sure. So I, I believe, I don't remember the exact date, but I could find that for the next meeting. I put, um, it was probably the end of June because I just got back from the FCCMA conference and I ran into Will Dan and I didn't realize that they operated in Florida. And I am a believer of being in charge of your own destiny. I don't like contracting things out that would better um, serve citizens if we did it in-house. So. So I put in the week in review about the potential to raise revenues through the building plan process. So right now, the county gets all of the building fee permits for the city of Avon Park. We don't even get a percentage of that revenue. We get nothing. If we did it in-house, uh we or even contracted with Wildan, we would receive a certain percentage of every permit that came into the city, even if it's two or three percent. That's that's revenue unrealized right now.
So do we share in the expenses though, or is the building department paying for all of the expenses? And that's why they're getting all the revenue?
We do not share in the expenses, but having run my own building department for eighteen years, the uh costs of permits exceeds the expenses. So they are, if if they're running it right, they should be making some kind of funding off of it.
So those were some of the questions then that you wanted to ask then was how did the revenue compare to the expenses or?
No.
I'm just trying to, what were your questions going forward to the county that you wanted to know?
Sure. So when I first got here, I tried to meet with different agencies and different departments in the county. Like I met with TDC, I met with Economic Development, and I reached out to Leah Salz to have a meeting with her to discuss, hey, if I'm a resident from Avon Park, and what does that look like? I want to build a house. Do I come here? What is the process? How long does it take to get permits? You know, just I just want to know their basic process. And uh I received an email from Sherry Sutton saying it would be inappropriate at this time to meet with you.
Is that because you weren't hired yet or were you already hired?
No, I was hired.
Okay. I mean, I I think that's an easy solution to get a meeting together and kind of before jumping to something like this and just throwing in a a random figure and having it be a wash and a placeholder and all that kind of stuff. I feel like there's a lot that we would need to talk about as far as revenues versus expenses and how everything is actually being run. Because if we're going to have our own building department, then you're also going to bring in additional liability. You're going to have engineers, and I know you're saying we would contract through another company. But I feel like that's a big if at this point.
Uh it's a hundred thousand dollars in two locations. It's easily backed out. You just put it as a placeholder.
But yeah, I think um they're all right. We're already, we do have expenses, in my opinion. Uh because you still look in the the plans, Randy helps with that. So you have those for landscaping, things along those lines. I'm not, I'm not whether champion for or against, I'm not doing it. I'm just saying that for you guys to know the decision, there is things that we do currently, right? So even landscaping, they finish a house, there's no landscaping. Yes, then we still can go by there, and then we could send a an email to Mr. Longshore and say, hey, you know, this this isn't done right or whatever. However, the whole process of that, all their stuff coming off the MPDS, everything coming off the sites, it's full of dirt, whatever it is, that's that's all money that really needs to be um that they're making. And then we are enforcing or some some way a part of if we don't like it or it basically rose to a nuisance. But you can, with it, you can establish and and take on what you feel the look of your city or, you know, have some kind of standardization there. Um I think that's, you know, would be beneficial from that standpoint. It is costly, but for expenses, we do, uh the city does do um currently do things like, you know, inspections and whatnot, reviews.
So is but is that part of what we're charging people for permits?
You don't, you don't make any like the I don't, we don't make money on the on a landscaping review. Is that is that accurate statement?
Sorry.
Okay. We we accurate. We make nothing. We actually expend money by having paying either Cool and Cobb Engineering or Paulston Engineering uh engineering fees to look at some of these plans. And we don't get that money recouped.
So is that something, though, that we could include in the permit? If if we do have these actual expenses that we're having to incur, then why can't we put that into our? We went through a few months ago, all of our permitting fees and all of that kind of stuff. So if that is something that we're actually having to pay, why can't we charge them that?
You could, but those are not permitting fees. The the fees that you speak of are simply zoning um certifications. They have nothing to do with the permit.
So can we have that as a new classification then? If we have to do this review and we have to hire an engineer, could that be passed?
You could, yes. And and I just, if I may, may I just speak for a second on this? Because I am involved in this daily majority of actually my job. I do about thirty percent code enforcement and about seventy percent of this stuff. Um I agree with Dr. Kelly. Um there, we're losing a lot of money um for permitting. The county, I I track the the things that I sign off on. I track those. I give those in my quarterly stat for the permits. If you take the amount of money that those permits are just the permit itself generating, and then you have the building plan, when when the fees that the building department charges for review of those plans and then the engineering, that they're making a lot of money on an individual, just a house, one simple house, let alone a huge development. We're not getting compensated hardly for anything i- in the developmental process. I I believe if, um this is no reflection on the county at all, and Mr. Longshore, they've been great to work with. But we, this could be, you could make money by keeping this in-house if you outsource that to a. I've also heard of these people. Uh there are numerous cities around the state of Florida that do use Will Dan that do their their uh building official uh services that are contracted. I just look at the 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 only permitting that I get involved in is something with what's considered a zoning implication. I mean, look at every roof that is being put on in this city, and there are hundreds upon hundreds upon hundreds of them. They don't even come to me on those. There's no zoning implication for a roof. So all those fees, the inspections, the plans, the engine, that's all being collected by the county. And that's a lot of money, a lot of money. And especially with all the building and development coming up, there's a potential for a lot more money to to come in instead of giving it to the county.
But do we have any idea, like in your communication with that company that you're talking about, as far as what the expenses to us would be in comparison to what is being generated in revenue from each of these projects?
Ideally, our permits would cover the cost of the expenses to contract.
Then we'll also look at what the permit costs are currently versus what they would have to be with contracting it out versus in-house, et cetera, et cetera.
And I'd like to piggyback on what um I'd like to agree with what Randy and Dr. Kelly are stating. I think that it's about time we take um control of our own destiny. If we can handle it here in Avon Park, I think we should, we should at least give it a try. And by my understanding, talking to Ms. Gray, the only reason why the county got it in the first place, because they couldn't balance the budget.
Who couldn't balance the budget?
City of Avon Park.
We're not balancing the budget now, not even close.
And so that's the reason why the this the county even got it in the first place. I think it's time to bring it home.
Not, well, that's my biggest concern, though, is the expenses of actually doing it. I feel like we have no idea as far as what revenue would come in and what our expenses would actually be at. I feel like we're shooting in the dark, saying it's even going to be a wash.
She says she's done it for eighteen years, and she already said the revenue will outweigh the the expenses.
She said they covered. She she expects them to cover the expenses.
Very simple to see. We just need to see.
I just want to see numbers.
See the numbers. It's easy to find. Just got to do it.
I just have one simple question. If we were to contract out with a company like this, how would a citizen basically apply for a permit if they're not building a location there?
They, it would be seamless to the resident. Will Dan would house their person here, or they would have an online portal for them to apply to. Like, they worked right in my office, in my planning department.
So you, the actual like inspector would actually work in City Hall so that inspections wouldn't be delayed thirty days, sixty days, ninety days?
So you typically have a planning technician that would take the permits in and process them. And when they would call for inspections, that inspector would be scheduled to come and do the inspections.
Would it be a local inspector, though?
They do have a local inspector for this corridor, yes. But that I doubt the inspector would be housed at Avon Park, but the permit tax, the plans reviewers, they would be housed here.
Well, that was the only issue. I remember when we had to um contract out for the fire inspector. And they had like one day a week that they came. And so if they came out and there was an issue and it was a very, it might be a sticker on the window that they said, oh, you're missing your sticker. And so they'd go down to Ace and they'd put the sticker on the window. Well, they couldn't get another inspection for at least a week because that wasn't our day. And so there were a lot of backlogs and frustrations. And when we were able to get away from that, it was like a hallelujah moment. So that's the only thing I'm worried about is if it's not somebody that is in Highlands County that's available to go out at the drop of a hat, what kind of backlogs are we going to see? And that that costs people money, you know, when you're talking about a big housing development, if you're talking about a company, a business. That's a very frustrating issue to have when you, when you, when it's not readily available.
It's a valid concern that if we were to pursue this, we could make that as part of the contract. But again, it's just, you know, how do you want to proceed?
So our garage sale permits come in at two hundred dollars. And that just shows the one hundred dollars for the building permits. Our until governmental revenues have all of these different types of revenues, and we are budgeted at one point four million. Again, this slide just shows the percentage of each one of the categories. Half cent sales tax is budgeted at six hundred and sixty five thousand, which is a decrease of fifty one thousand. Eight cent sales tax is budgeted at a hundred and ten thousand. It's an increase of three thousand. Mobile home fees budgeted at sixty nine hundred. It's an increase of nine hundred. Alcohol beverage license tax is budgeted at eight thousand. That's a decrease of twenty two hundred. Revenue sharing is budgeted at three hundred and ninety thousand. It's a decrease of fifty thousand. Firefighter supplemental compensation is budgeted at two thousand, two hundred dollars. It's an increase of four hundred dollars. DOT highway lighting contract budgeted at eighty eight thousand, seven hundred. It's an increase of two thousand, five hundred and seventy. The mowing contract is budgeted at thirty nine, nine sixty. It's an increase of one thousand, three hundred and ten dollars. Our grant from Highlands County remains the same at a hundred and twenty five thousand. Charges for services are budgeted at one million, twenty nine thousand, four hundred and ten dollars. Zoning fees are budgeted at eleven thousand, an increase of three thousand, four hundred and fifty. Fire inspections budgeted at three thousand, seven hundred. It's an increase of two thousand, five hundred and fifty. Fire assessment fees are budgeted at nine ninety one, one sixty. The reason for the ten thousand decrease, there's a contra revenue that wasn't in the um graph last year that the county takes a certain percentage because they collect the tax for us. So is that, what rate is that fire assessment based on? It's at last year's rate. Which was one, one six, one sixty, is that right? Yes.
Yes.
The alcohol revenue, do you think there will be an increase in sales because we're now allowing Sunday sales and servicing that early at seven AM and so the like?
That revenue comes from the state of Florida, so they collect it and pass it on to us, so we would have to monitor that and see.
Okay.
Code enforcement fees come in at twenty two thousand, eight hundred. It's an increase of two thousand, eight hundred. Rental fees budgeted at seven hundred and fifty, same as last year. Fines and forfeitures are budgeted at one thousand, thirteen thousand, one hundred dollars. And your graph just shows the percentages. Court fines are budgeted at twelve thousand. It's a decrease of seven thousand. Police education funds remains the same at a thousand. Restitution is budgeted at a hundred dollars. It's a decrease of five hundred. Other miscellaneous revenues are budgeted at five hundred and ninety four thousand, one hundred. And of course, your return on investment is one point five. And again, that graph shows your percentages. Interest income is budgeted at four hundred and thirty five thousand. It's an increase of a hundred and thirty five thousand. Rental of governmental buildings increased to one hundred and twenty three thousand. It's an increase of sixty seven thousand. That's because we brought um classic cladium from the airport fund into the general fund. Miscellaneous revenues is budgeted at thirty six thousand, one hundred. That's an increase of thirty two thousand. And your return on investment is budgeted at one point five million. And that's the end of the revenues. Any questions? Okay, we're on to the expenses. Total general fund expenses are ten million, eight hundred fifteen thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars. This graph shows the percentages. So total general government expenses, you have five categories there. They come in at about one point five million. And your percent graph. City council is budgeted at ninety thousand, seven hundred and sixty. It's an increase of six thousand, one hundred and fifty. That's due to the um increase in health insurance. And then there's your detail. If you guys have any questions?
Any questions?
Okay. City manager is budgeted at seven hundred thousand, eight, four hundred and eighty. It's an increase of one hundred and sixty eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety.
I just want to point out, a hundred and thirty five thousand of that increase is for the HR coordinator and the IT engineer that was hired.
So I'll let you take a look at those and let me know if you have any questions. Okay, uh city manager capital expenses. Um our IT administrator is asking for a public works computer that is um specifically for public. Oh, sorry, public records, not public works. The finance department is budgeted at one hundred and seventy six thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars. It's an increase of seventy two thousand. That's due to the um addition of the grants coordinator and allo, part of the allocation of their salary. And I'll let you look at the expenses and let me know.
Go ahead.
Okay. City attorney expenses is budgeted at a hundred and eighty thousand. It's a decrease of one thousand, four hundred dollars. And his expenses are there as well. Other governmental services is budgeted at three hundred and fifty nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars. It's an increase of eighty one thousand, one hundred and ninety. That's mostly um related to the increase in liability and property insurance.
Yeah.
Okay, Chrissy, if you could go to uh slide one twenty one. This is the capital request for the um other governmental services. This is the capital request for the other governmental services. So we are requesting 60,000 to remodel the utility billing area. That's very old and antiquated and we'd like to get that remodeled. We're waiting on a proposal for that or a quote. We have to replace the four units at city hall. Air conditioning units, they keep, they're, right now we've put a band-aid on them. They come out, they repair it. The brakes that come out, we, you know, it's been going, an ongoing issue. We are requesting 60,000 for a generator for the council chambers, which Chief and Taylor and I yesterday successfully submitted a grant for, so we'll see if we get the funding for that. We are requesting $72,000 for a, I'm sorry, oh, 7200, thank you. For backup batteries for the network server and $5,000 to replace the flagpole at city hall.
Let me go back one slide. I missed one little note that I had on the other governmental services expenses.
Yes.
You have Main Street creation underneath promotional activities and then 100 year celebration.
Yes, those were requested by Dr. Kelly, so I'll let you explain.
Yes, so we, since there's been so much discussion about the Main Street program, we plugged in $30,000. If that program has stood up and you want to move forward with it. And then next year, Avon Park turns 100 years old, so I figured you'd want to have some type of big celebration memorializing that. So I plugged in funding for that as well.
I have a question too on the increase in the sheriff contract. Is that a minimum expected increase or is that an actual increase you know of on this?
That's, that's the actual increase that they proposed.
And then one question on the capital requests. So the generator, the 60,000, did we put a generator at the community center or no?
There is, there is a request for a generator at the community center and it's also part of the grant that we applied for.
So it would be a grant for both the chamber and for the community center?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Awesome.
That'd be like one for the community center. I don't know why they didn't apply. It'd be a great location for us in case of a disaster or hurricane that where we could, residents could go and loss of electricity that they could come and cool down for a little bit. We could service people could maybe bring food and water to give out, access to internet so that they could, internet or and wifi as a stopover for a few minutes, a few hours as well as charging their equipment. So I think that we don't have to air condition the entire community center. We could just do certain parts of the first floor for a minimum amount and you could do that by cutting out just a portion of it and that could be done for a small electrical charge to prepare that. So I like that idea. Sorry, if you didn't hear me.
Okay, moving on to public safety. The total budget for public safety is right around 7 million. It's an increase of 969,000. And your graph with the percentages. Police budget is budgeted at 3.6 million. It's an increase of 807,000 due to the contract with the sheriff's office. There's not much detail for the sheriff's office. Fire department is budgeted at 2.7 million. It's an increase of 53,000. And there's your detail. So I'll let you look at that and let me know if you have any questions.
I just had a question on why there was a large increase in overtime. Was that because we didn't have enough firefighters and they were having to work more or?
Yeah, we, we were short three last year. We all have all of our positions filled now. But so filled meaning we have bodies, but we don't count them as a permanent employee for a few more months because they have to go through our probation status. So we will still be using overtime for a little longer, but in the next few months, they come off that probation and they count as a person.
So the amount that's budgeted is what you anticipate actually having to pay in overtime?
Well, we also had to anticipate if there's going to be storms and stuff too. So we put a kind of larger number into that. You know, potentially not using it for storms, but yes. But yeah, there was a, there was a contract change too, but sick time now counts. If you take sick time, it counts as hours worked. So that also is affecting overtime a little bit.
Okay. Um, Chief, do we have a lot of workman's comp with our, with our?
Uh, that'd be a good question for HR, but I don't think so, no.
Any other questions on fire? Moving on.
Code enforcement is budgeted at 428,000. It's a decrease of 52,000. That's related to the allocation of the salary to the planning and zoning department. And there's your detail. If you want to look at it and let me know if you have any questions.
Curious on the demolition and repairs. Is code enforcement doing demolition and repairs? Why is that in there?
So they have done some demolitions previously and they requested four, but they haven't done that many. So I cut it back to just two. So they have some funding.
I'm assuming these are outside of CRA.
Correct.
Got it.
I have a question, Emily, on that. Put it in the next slide. The posters and shipping. I know we do a lot of certified letters, but is that where, that's the average of what the posting and shipping is? Is the first one?
Page 133. I can, I can validate. Yes, we, we spend a lot of money on postage. Statutorily, we have to. We don't have a choice. And this year we're fully staffed. Last year we may have not used the entire amount that we had budgeted. But this year being fully staffed, that's a lot more mail going out, a lot more correspondence that we have to do. So yes, that is accurate. And we do use the United States postage where we, we create our own stamps and envelopes. So we do a discounted grade. We don't just run and get a bunch of up to the post office every time we have to send a certified letter. It's all done internally. At a less cost than if we went to the post office and did. We do. Yes, ma'am.
Does that also include utility billing or does a contract company do that?
I would have to defer to.
It does not include utility billing. That's in the enterprise fund.
Okay.
So Randy, the 75,000 for the foreclosure fees. Do we anticipate recouping those by being able to sell those properties?
In a perfect world, yes. Currently, we're getting close to finally having the current, we have one open right now and it's been ongoing for three plus years. And it finally went to trial. I think we're probably 30 days away from getting the judge's ruling. And we are close to almost $100,000 of attorney's fees into that case. But it's five, it's five locations. It's not just one location. So that was kind of a test case. We've had another one where I believe eventually Mr. Jared ended up buying the property on North Lake. But that was, they surrendered the deed in lieu of, and that's kind of what we expect on a lot of the foreclosures. If we push it, we don't expect to get legal fees, but in this particular one, the gentleman had the means. Because we were, you know, it's, 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 he's a, has numerous rental properties. So he had the means to fight it and obviously we have to fight as well. Obviously not with our own attorney, but we had to outsource to an attorney that is, so, but we are, we're every bit of probably $90,000 into that. So in a perfect world, if we get, if we get the judgment, those properties most likely will go to sale. I'm, I'm sure the city, it will be up to you guys if, if you want to keep them, but a lot of them are, are not in code compliance. So if you did keep them and you tried to, I don't know, it seems like would be a liability issue if you kept them, but so they go to sale on the front steps of the courthouse. You'll, you'll recoup, I would hope you would recoup at least your, your attorney fees and then whatever is extra, but I don't think the city eventually wants these five properties. And that's not what you're in business for, but we certainly hope to at least send a message, even if we broke even, that, you know, the, the city's not complacent. If you don't do what you're supposed to do. We're gonna, you know, that is the last tool on the tool belt foreclosure. You don't, you know, you don't want to make a habit of that or you're gonna up that, you're gonna have to have a $500,000 budget for that line item, but I'm, I'm, I'm hoping the city will prevail. But yeah, that's inaccurate. That's inaccurate. We haven't done one lately, so because we're exhausting all the funds in the current budget year from the one that we started three years ago in legal fees.
And Randy, are we close to wrapping that up, the five properties?
Within 30 days, I believe. Yeah, it's in front, the, of the, the judge made a very, I've never heard of it, but where the closing arguments were done in writing. She didn't want to hear them openly. So what she did is she gave, this was in June, beginning of June. So she gave 45 days for the transcripts to come from the last, because that was a case that got continued. That's probably contributed to the extra attorney fees as well. It got contributed to on proceeding circumstances. And continued, I mean, not contributed. And then she gave, it's about 45 days. So I would envision, she, she gave herself 15 days to make a decision, 45 days. So it was 60. So we got to be within 30 days of her final ruling.
Planning and zoning expenses are budgeted at 109,000. That's an increase of 54,000 and that's directly related to the allocation from code enforcement. Street department is budgeted at 1.5 million. That's an increase of 153,000. A lot of that is related to the increase in property insurance and the COLA. So if you have any questions, let us know.
So that doesn't include any of the new positions?
There is an allocation. I think the oh, the pay grade, the pay grade change.
Okay.
Any questions on any of the expenses?
I do want to note that there's $104,000 identified for streetlights on Memorial Drive.
Where is this at?
Page 99. 104,000.
It's the electricity. I think it says 12,000.
Oh, where's the capital? I'm sorry. Oh, the next page. Oh, we haven't gotten there yet. Sorry. Jumping ahead.
Uh, street department capital request, we, the monument signs, we are requesting $50,000 that will be placed at the city limits. The, an F 600 aerial lift is a, was in the budget last year. And it just rolled forward. There was one truck denied. And then we have the mower replacement program that continues year after year.
When you say the mower replacement, what are we talking about? Zero turns or the one that pulled the tractor, the tray, the tractor behind?
So they're commercial and when we get into the CIP plan, it'll show all of them, but.
And we replace these like every two years?
We replace them annually and I'm not sure how many that would have to be two, two annually.
How many do we have, you know?
I have no idea. Culture and Recreation Department comes in at 741,000. Again, your graph. Parks Department is budgeted at 524,000. That's a decrease of 43,400.
The.
Can you go back to the last screen?
While she's looking at that, so the, the lake maintenance, the fish stock and all that kind of good stuff, looks like are, are those requirements now that we're going to be doing each year or?
It's not a requirement, but when we removed all of the weeds along Lake Verona, I was down there walking it and the amount of mosquitoes and bugs was just horrific. So I looked into an environmentally friendly way to control, these fish actually eat the larva of those insects. And it's a one-time thing that you would stock the fish and obviously they would procreate and be self-sustaining.
So Dr. Kelly, whose responsibility is it to maintain Lake, Tulane?
It, it would be us.
It would be us?
Yes.
So I'm confused when she said, are we going to be maintaining that now?
Well, she was asking if the fish stocking is an annual thing and, and it's not. Yeah, so we're, I'm proposing to introduce fish into the lakes. Specifically catfish because they love to eat these larvae. And then it would be a form of vector control instead of going out and spraying noxious fumes everywhere.
One other question, why was there such a large decrease, which is a good thing, but in the ballpark maintenance? How were we able to get that almost half?
There was a purchase order last year that was not liquidated. So that kind of skewed that. So when, when we bring it forward next time, that'll be gone.
Okay.
It's almost a wash.
And then for the playground maintenance, I know we've discussed having to do a lot of maintenance and repairs, but we don't, we only have 3,000 budgeted for that. I know we spent a lot more on that, just on mulch and things like that.
I, I think you'll see some of that reflected in the capital improvements of actually purchasing new playground equipment in, in a different part of the budget.
Okay. And there was also last year, we put into, I think it was like $30,000 for park maintenance overall. And that has, we didn't put that in there. So if you want us to, to do that, we really didn't use it. We used maybe 10,000 of it, I think. Okay.
And I got a question about the memorial football field in repair. I assume it's a repair and maintenance. Is, what do we do up there when it comes to maintenance? Cause I'm, I'm finding $2,000. If you were to send a little 10-year-old to mow it, it gonna cost more than $2,000 just to mow it. So I'm, I'm finding that number kind of low.
For which one are you talking about, Ms. Moore?
Memorial football field repairs and maintenance.
We only used $10 last year, so we've budgeted it and not used any of it.
Jason?
River Greens Maintenance, you see it in your contract. That's, that's what does the ball fields. And that's the, the 2,000 would probably be for your painting of the goalpost, things like that, bleachers. And you have your capital, your capital program, but your River Greens Maintenance is our ballpark maintenance. That's who takes care of all that.
And you have your capital, your capital program, but your River Greens Maintenance is our ballpark maintenance. That's who takes care of all that.
Oh, go back. Mall Christmas decoration was fifteen. What's what's going on with that? Because I mean, we talked about it one time and it seemed like it fell on deaf ear. We haven't heard anything back. But it's fifteen grand a per.
Yes, so. One of your signature events for the city is obviously the Christmas parade. And there's, as lovely as the cows are, and I truly appreciate them, there's a lot of people in town that do not. So, uh, you know, we are looking to put more decorations on the mall that are. You know, newer and more attractive than the cows. Yes.
And so have these been purchased?
No, not yet.
I mean, we're in the, we're at the tiptoe into August. Why, why?
Well, they weren't budgeted, so this this budget's for starting October. Um, you budgeted sixty-five hundred.
And we've used fifty-six hundred.
Yeah, you've used fifty-six eighty already. So there's not much left. Seven hundred dollars? Six twenty?
And and probably for those signs that were on the lamp posts, the banners that we bought and all that stuff.
And and I'm just asking. What is fifteen, what is fifteen grand gonna be?
You could get additional lighting, you could get. We have lots of ideas. So we want to put a walk, where the walkway is in the mall, we want to put like these nice big light-up. Orchards that you can walk under and have a really cool little trail for Christmas. Um, that's that's one of the ideas, uh, lighting, well.
Little bit every year?
Yep.
And you think fifteen is gonna make a difference? We're gonna see a difference.
Yeah, you'll see a difference.
I'm just curious.
I I'll put a hundred thousand in there if you let me, but you know, try to do a little at a time.
It's a mile-long ball.
I know.
And I'm trying to figure out what fifteen gonna do. Yeah, it's just.
Okay.
We're two point one million dollars in the hole this year. Come on.
Well, I don't think twenty-five is gonna make much more of a difference than the fifteen, so I feel like at this point. It's gonna be have to be a group effort kind of idea all the way down Main Street and get business owners involved. And I think trickling in a little bit at a time is gonna be, you know. Kind of pointless in my opinion, but.
I agree with you. Only difference would be. Didn't you call billings? And after first of the year, we could buy a lot of those stuff at discount. Followed.
Yeah, but most of the commercial stuff doesn't go on discount like Walmart does. You know, we can go to Walmart and get it seventy percent off, but it's only gonna last for a year.
Okay, our capital request for parks, we have. A sage shell, a sade, yeah, thank you. Sale at Eileen McWhite for eight thousand. We have engineered mulch at Eileen McWhite for seventy-five hundred. We have improvements at the MLK Field. And we, the original budget was a hundred and fifty from last year. We spent fifty, so we've rolled forward a hundred. We have improvements at the MLK Press Box, which was in the budget last year, thirty thousand, was not spent, so we rolled it forward. We have improvements at Align McWhite for cameras and lights. We originally budgeted fifty thousand. We spent twenty-five, so we rolled five forward. There is a backhoe for a hundred and ten thousand dollars. To replace the current two thousand and five that we have that has. Um, a lot of issues and is high maintenance costs. We have the Central Ave Park improvements for fifty thousand. This was in the budget last year for sixty-five. We spent fifteen of it, so we rolled forward the fifty thousand.
So all of those park upgrades can't be paid for with the FERD app or the CRA grants? Instead of taking it out of the general fund?
Possibly could. It's a possibility.
I'd say let's throw every bit of it we can into those two directions.
Okay.
And keep our general fund.
Some of it could possibly go into the infrastructure too, infrastructure fund. So we'll take a look at those. Our Recreation Department is budgeted at a hundred and sixty-one thousand. It's an increase of fifteen thousand.
When you say recreation, what are we talking about, Boys and Girls?
Uh, this is. It's staff, yeah. It's not the Boys and Girls Club.
A part of it.
Part of it is, yes. Yeah.
I have a question. You're saying that we're paying part of the salary of the Boys and Girls Club?
No, sir. It's, um, our salaries, the our staff salaries that gets allocated to the upkeep of the Boys and Girls Club.
Because there's actually no such thing as a Boys and Girls Club, a very long park. Thank you.
Yep. Community Center is budgeted at fifty-five thousand, six hundred and ninety. It's an increase of one thousand and seventy dollars. They don't have, uh, very many expenses in the community center.
I have one question on that real quick, because I know Heartland Cultural Alliance is the one that takes care of everything at the community center. Have we received, I know we did like a year-long agreement with them to see how everything was gonna work out as far as expenses versus revenue and things like that. Have we gotten any reports from the Heartland Cultural Alliance to see what those numbers look like?
I have not received any, but I'll ask them for one.
We probably need to look at that, because I think the agreement was only supposed to be for a year anyway, and then we were gonna go back and look. And see how everything was panning out with them managing it for us.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Um, so we have to decide on a preliminary millage rate that will go on the tax roll that's mailed to the citizens. Um, I've done a few scenarios here for you. Right now, our budget is based on the six mil. So I've done a few scenarios in order for us to break even after we take the ROI from the Enterprise Fund. We would have to put our mill up to seven point five.
Where is it at now?
We're at five. And we're proposing six in the budget.
For a dozen years, we were six point five earlier, correct?
Or what was that?
For about twelve years earlier, that's about ten years ago.
We were at point three.
On the, well, even before before that, there was at least eight years.
Oh, it was five point, almost six. We were close to six.
So at six mills. Total, it's two point one four seven million out of reserves. Is that correct?
Correct. Well, not out of reserves, because the one point five million from Enterprise Fund comes from their profit. So we cannot take from the Enterprise Fund unless they make a profit.
So how much of that two point one four seven million is coming out of the reserves of the general fund?
It's one point five two hundred dollars.
Okay.
I think what you're looking for, Mayor, is the loss after ROI. So that would be six hundred and eighty-seven thousand, one twenty at six mills.
So you bring over eight?
No. Six point.
I'm not sure what they're at. I, Dr. Kelly, I think you reached out, but I'll reach out and get the, what the county is anticipating budgeting. And what the City of Sebring is anticipating.
Yes, ma'am.
Jane Benham, six oh five South Yegrit Street, Sebring, Florida. I believe Sebring's at six point three five for their twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget. And I think that the county is trying to budget seven point seven five, but that won't be voted on until September sixteenth. So.
So we will need a consensus to put on the tax notice.
This is not part of the trim. We already went to more than that, but.
I can't hear you, Mr.
The trim, we already went more than that.
We always go more.
Like eight or twelve.
I would recommend seven.
Do you know what we did to trim last year?
We, on the trim last year, we did six. And stayed at five.
And Melanie, did I hear you say earlier that seven point five will break even?
Yes, ma'am, after the ROI. Now, when we do the tax notice, as you all are aware, we can always go down from that number, but we cannot go up.
Yes, sir.
Just a quick question, one on East Main Street, Chris Downey. Have we, uh, put in impact fees at all into any of the budgeting for next year?
No.
So that's something we really need to consider. And is the expected development supposed to happen within a year?
I, the expected development hasn't even been approved by council yet, so I couldn't speculate.
Okay.
Uh, what their timing would be. I do want to point out that development impact fees can only be used for capital improvements. They can't be used for maintenance and, uh, just salaries of regular budgeting.
Okay, so that's something that the council should consider next year for the impact fees, right?
I think we should consider lowering expenses.
I think a little bit of both, right?
Yeah, a lot easier, you know, penny saved, a penny earned, right?
Thank you.
Somebody's gotta pay it if you raise that.
Yeah, I know, but still, we have to, of this impact that's gonna happen, we have to consider that.
We do have impact fees in the Enterprise Fund.
Okay, thank you.
So I would just exhaust to the city admin that we have to look for ways of cutting costs, planning something. I understand everything seems as though it is needed. I get it. That's why you put it in there. I'm not doubting that, but. The simple answer is this is unsustainable. So we have to. You know, we have to know what is the long-term goal, you know, if we're gonna take out of reserves today, is there a way to replace it later? Ultimately, if we continue down the same path that we're going, we're gonna end up with no reserves and then we're really gonna start getting hurt, right?
That's a big concern, I mean, also.
So, you know, chances are building is going to go down in the future, you know, it doesn't look very good for, you know, the economy going on the next five years, so. I don't think we can expect to get more and more tax revenue out of building projects. I think this is, we're kind of getting to the end of it, so. I mean, obviously, we can't make that call for you. We're we're relying upon the admin to come up with those ways that we can either generate more revenue. Or lower costs. So I would just strongly encourage you to keep doing that as much as possible. All right, is there any, uh?
I need it once Mr. Bernard gets back. We need to decide what's gonna go on the, uh, trim notice.
Any discussion about the trim? In the audience. Got a couple minutes to kill before we can make a decision. Okay.
I'm fine with the trim notice as as far as going with what Melody suggested. I just want to keep it. As low as possible and I'd rather try to find ways, like you said, to trim costs versus passing on all of this to the homeowners. And the citizens, because once you start adding in garbage increases, fire assessment increases, millage rate increases. I feel like it's gonna hurt a lot.
Yes, sir.
Maybe a suggestion. Um, I was looking at the FY twenty-five FERD app, this FERD, I think there was like twelve point four million or something like that for the entire state. So whenever we try to put stuff off the FERD app or if we earmark things and it goes forward. I don't, I I think it's gonna be really hard for those to come to fruition. So savings of large scale savings, so some of the things we're looking at, whether it's set aside, whatever it is, I think it's just, I'll say a pipe dream, right? I mean, I think there was like three in Highlands County, something like that. Um. Some of those bigger projects can make a big impact on our, um. You know, budget or what we spend and then also given that false. Expectation from residents wanting to get something done, right? So when you're out there, you hear people, hey, what what are you doing? We don't see a difference. Or some things, they do see a difference, right? But some of those large expenditures, if you're looking to what to cut back on. Those FERD app, you know, looking at how you said, even if you don't spend it, yes, it still stays in, but when you're looking at your budget, it looks mighty fat, right? Looks pretty big. So, um. You know, I think that's something you you concentrate on there, um, some of your, some of your cost. And I think it'll, it'll make a difference.
Costs for the FERD, after me?
Uh, like if you set aside, if it's a, if it's a matching grant, a hundred, a hundred, I don't know if it's a placeholder, I'm. Pretty sure it is. You could be put a hundred in there, but when you start putting your budget together and you see a hundred thousand dollars. Or you have three hundred, four hundred, whatever it is that you want to put in there to try to get it. Then it's a significant, it's a significant amount, right? And then we're we're talking about, like, we we don't bat an eye when we want to put three, four hundred thousand dollars for FERD app. But then when it comes time to, you know, get this or that for five thousand, ten thousand dollars, I guess, that's crazy, right? So I think we look at it from that standpoint. If you want to actually do a project and you're really all behind it. And we have to really make the effort to try to do that, but just for every damn FERD app, FERD app, go get it. I mean, I haven't seen, I don't know when our last FERD app project was, right? So some of those things, I think you're probably better off with the CRA, working with that and getting it through there, because it's immediate, right? If you designate the funds, I think you're much better off getting some of your recreation and getting some of your other things done. With that, with with the money that you do have and the quick hitters, the the small deliverables, some of the smaller, like Eileen McWhite, right? Boom, I mean, it's people out there all the time. Now, I drive by there, kids, kids, young adults out there playing basketball. The court's filled up, people sitting on the sidelines. Right? That's, I mean, for value of what we spent, that's great, you know, there are Martin been waiting on that. But if you can get something out there and, you know. And, um. Deliver what what the people are expecting, but then not have all that money set aside where you're you're not spending it, but it's making your overall number look massive. I think that's something that you take a look at, you know, um, you know, you, it's, of course, we would like the assistance. Right? I think when we're sitting on RPAC, right, they were actually delivering projects. Those things were coming over, but they kind of did an adjustment. And I think the county really assisted well with getting things done. Are you, you, I'm sure you have, you sat on it, so. A great familiarity with it. I think those are the sources where you get some of the parts. And I think if you can cut back on some of those, uh, larger expenditures, then just say, listen. You know, that's, let's do something we could actually do. Don't, don't set that money aside and inflate our our budget number. To where we're really over here trying to make some difficult decisions when you may not have to.
Yeah. All right, Jim, question to you. Is anybody opposed to a seven-mill trim notice? I think everybody here agrees. You oppose to it, in favor of it? See? Is anybody opposed to the seven-mill trim notice?
No.
No.
Okay. You have your consensus.
Thank you.
Yeah, bro. Okay.
Chrissy was the, um, you have in front of you the budget summary that looks like this. This is what gets advertised in the paper when we finalize the. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, on to the water wastewater fund.
Okay.
This is your budget summary for the water wastewater fund. It, total budget is thirty-nine million. Income and loss before ROI or capital, it, the Enterprise Fund gained two point seven million. After the ROI, it's one point two million, and after capital, it's negative six million, so that amount will be taken out of reserves. And as you can see, are we, if you look at the. Fund balance reserves asset at the top underneath total sources. Currently, we're at fourteen million. After this budget, we'll be at eight point three.
That's a decent hit there.
Yep. Uh, water and wastewater revenues are budgeted at twenty-four million. Uh, water and wastewater revenues are budgeted at twenty-four million. A total... Sorry. Total wastewater is budgeted, I'm sorry, I don't know what I'm looking at here. Total wastewater revenues are 8.3 million, which is an increase of 1.7 million. That just shows your percentages. Uh, these, these are all of the categories in water revenue, which total four million. Water revenue is budgeted at 2.4 million, which is an increase of a hundred and thirty thousand. Irrigation revenue is budgeted at sixty thousand, same as last year. Sebring Ridge revenue is budgeted at three hundred thousand, same as last year. Crystal Lake is budgeted at a hundred and thirty-five thousand. It's an increase of thirty-five thousand. Lake Damon revenue budgeted at seventy-five, same as last year. Reconnection fees is budgeted at sixty thousand. It's a decrease of twenty thousand, which that number will probably increase because we are getting ready to reinstate the disconnection process. Hydrant and sprinkler revenue is budgeted at ten thousand. It's a decrease of two thousand. Water tapping fees is budgeted at thirty-six thousand. It's a decrease of four thousand. Right-of-way permits is new. We haven't budgeted that before, so that's at sixteen thousand. Water impact fees are budgeted at a hundred and thirty thousand. It's an increase of fifty-four thousand. The interest in the water department is budgeted at five hundred and eighty-seven thousand. It's a decrease of sixty-six thousand. And miscellaneous revenues are budgeted at a hundred and ten. It's an increase of a hundred thousand. Our wastewater revenues total four point three million. Our sewer revenue is budgeted at two point five million. That's an increase of six hundred and thirty thousand. Septage revenues are budgeted at one point four million. That's an increase of seven hundred and thirty thousand. Crystal Lake Sewer is budgeted at two hundred and forty thousand. It's an increase of a hundred thousand.
Are all of these large increases based on our rates that we had just put in?
Yes, ma'am. Lake Damon Sewer revenue is budgeted at thirty-seven thousand. It's a decrease of three thousand.
So why is Lake, Lake Damon?
These are budgeted at a hundred and thirty thousand. That's an increase of ninety-five thousand. Miscellaneous income is at five hundred. That's a decrease of seven thousand. And that's the end of revenues. Any questions?
Nope.
Total expenses in the enterprise fund are budgeted at four point six million and, of course, the return on investment of one point five million. And that's just a graph showing the percentages of each department. Utility billing services is budgeted at four hundred and eighty-seven thousand. That's an increase of seven hundred and twenty. And I'd just like to point out the reason for the, not a large increase in salaries and benefits is because we have a new, um, uh, utility billing manager, so she makes less than the one that retired. The only capital request in utility billing is for two new desks with, when we're going to try to do the rehabbing or remodeling of the utility billing service, we're going to do away with the partition wall there and all the built-ins and just put, um, regular desks in that area. Wastewater Services is budgeted at two point four million. That's an increase of six hundred and fifty-seven million. Thousand.
So the regular salaries, the regular salaries in the, and that one is more than doubled.
Oh, yeah, so we have our C and D tax were budgeted last year in just water. So we've split their salaries fifty-fifty into wastewater and water, and then that includes the three new hires that are in the budget.
Okay.
Any other questions?
So the hundred thousand dollars for new developments under professional services, what exactly does that cover? That pipes, the...
Connections and new developments, maybe? Waterline.
Oh, Kimley Horn. I don't, I'm trying to find it on my sheet. I don't, page one eighty-eight. Oh, yeah, so we, that's the, we increased that because we are now charging, um, developments a fee that we get back.
So the, uh, the sludge hauling on the same page, you know, we went, we was pretty steady, jumping by about five thousand a year, and then all of a sudden, this past year, we went from a hundred and eighty-five to three thirty. And then you're estimating three fifty this year. Any idea what led to that change?
I think it's increases in the price at the landfill.
Okay, and we're taking that to where?
We're taking it to the Highlands County, oh.
Those go to Lakeland.
Cedar Trail. Yeah, I'm assuming that's our only option.
I would imagine. I'm not sure. There's no one here to...
We've used them for the last eleven years.
Well, if somebody doubles the price on you, you might want to take a look. Just ask them. Any other questions? Ain't none?
Okay, our wastewater capital requests. Um, we have fifty-five thousand for TCU upgrades. That's five this year, ten this year, and five next year. Because the TCU's that we have are out of date and discontinued, and we need to upgrade to new models. We have a generator with a pad and electric at the Public Works plant to, or Public Works, uh, shop that holds the houses, the skater, and this was a roll forward from last year. Um, we rehab water waste, I'm sorry, wastewater lines. Every year, we budget two hundred and fifty for that. We have a hundred and sixty budgeted for lift station relining, and that's a ongoing, that's in the capital improvement, five-year capital improvement plan. We have three hundred and seventy-five in lift station rehab, and that consists of two hundred and fifty to provide routine maintenance and replacement of lines, and then we have Cummins Triplex Mater Life Station for a hundred and fifty. Uh, we have sixty thousand in for the lift station replacement, which was a grant. And part of this is a rollover. We originally budgeted a hundred and fifty, so we rolled forward to sixty. Uh, wastewater treatment plant upgrade, one point five million. This was in last year's budget, and we rolled it forward in, also in speaking with, uh, Jamison from Kimley Horn, he added the eight hundred thousand at the bottom of this line for, to do screw press improvements in a canopy for twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Any questions?
A lot of information here, and I'm not sure I'll be able to answer if you have any questions, because I'm really not sure of the extent of the...
So that, the eleven point five that's in here for, um, the wastewater treatment plant improvement, that's the part that's going to be covered under the grant, though.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, Melanie, I, I hope I pronounced it right. The vaccon, the vaccon truck, what is that used for?
The vaccon, that's a, it clears the lines.
It's like a vac...
Yes, ma'am.
Have to vacuum out all lift stations if they're down.
Yeah.
Get rid of all the sledge and grit.
So they also are requesting new this year, a sewer line camera with a trailer, and that is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. They're also requesting a six-inch bypass pump for the lift stations for eighty-six thousand. They are requesting a tiller for the, for the ponds at seventeen thousand, six hundred. And they're also requesting a tapping set for thirty-eight hundred.
Melanie, are these pieces of equipment that we have already, and they're replacing them, or we never had?
So the vaccon truck, I think there's a description on that. It's going to, it will be re, it will be purchased to replace the two thousand and seventeen that will be transferred to the stormwater department and a two thousand and one vaccon truck that's no longer cost-effective.
Yes, sir.
I just want to point out also, Councilmember Taylor, that there was a Ford F-150 that was denied.
So on the septic receiving, that's a pretty large number, but there's probably a really good chance that the septic receiving, you can get a, uh, you can, you can get a grant for that, good chance for that. Just want to bring up, as, uh, Dr. Kelly talked about, uh, the truck, if you get the other positions, you're going to have to, there's probably a good chance that you're going to require F-250 service body truck, which I think is what, ninety grand, something like that?
We put in for, um, actually a Ford Ranger, and that they can ride together.
Yeah, that's a, that's a bad proposition. Um, I, I think, um, you know, the, the, how much the revenue up versus how much expenses. Now, some of these things, I think you can look at as far as like your septic receiving, the amount of grants, and else that you got. But I mean, one point five million dollars from this and went over to help out the general fund, right? So it's taking money and you look at the cost and everything else, but I think you're, um, you know, you get your, your people out there to be able to take, they'll get grants, that's going to work out, work out well for y'all, but I think you need to get those, uh, the two, two people riding together at, that's okay, but it's not really efficient. Um, and it's, I didn't see it up there, but it's, um, that force main that goes over to, when it comes off your lake to lane, it's going to be going, you're going to have a new force main coming out and going into an old one. So there was something put together for that, but that's my thoughts.
Sure. Jenny?
Water expenses come in at two point four million. That's a decrease of thirty-six thousand. Then we have our water capital requests. A lot of these are in the capital, the five-year capital improvement plan that just rolls forward, rolls continually. If you look at the machinery and equipment, it's the Ford Ranger that Dr. Kelly was referring to and the valve exercising trailer that she was referring to. They are also requesting a chainsaw that will cut through galvanized pipe. Three thousand, seven hundred dollars. I'm going to go through all of them.
The page one ninety-eight, you have, uh, two hundred and fifty thousand for water meters?
Yeah, water, that is a, a rolling number that we put in. It's in...
I understand that. We, I know that we had, uh, reached out for a grant on the water meters.
We did, but, uh, we got notification from Fred Fox that he thinks that's not going to go through.
Oh.
He, he got, he got word to say, what, Ms. Melanie?
He doesn't think that we're going to be funded. We put in an eight million dollar grant to replace all the meters in the city limits, well, in the city, so. And he got word that he does not think that's going to be funded. He hasn't got formal notification yet, but...
Okay, so he got word that he don't think all, or none of?
None of it.
Okay.
Um, work center expenses come in at two hundred and eleven thousand. It's an increase of thirty-seven thousand. This is basically anything that would happen out at the Public Works Barn. You can go to the new water and sewer and just go to the last slide. One on, yeah. Okay, so this budget summary, you, this is new, that wasn't in your packet. This is the total budget for the entire city. And this is what will be advertised when we, um, do our final advertisement for the millage and budget.
Sorry, it should be page of the binder clipped information you have in front of you.
So your total budget all in is sixty-nine million. And then the only other fund we have left is the infrastructure fund. It's going to be the, the first tab in your packet from that binder clip. So infrastructure money, funding that comes in, comes in from the state of Florida, and it's restricted to anything, any capital outlay to do with public safety. And we can use it on parks and recreation. So the first capital outlay is police, and again, that's the cars from the sheriff's office contract. Then we have the fire department. I'm going to let Chief Marcy take over.
Okay. So a lot of these are kind of reoccurring, uh, fire hydrant maintenance. Every year, we need to replace or install some fire hydrants. But that's that. Radios, we have to have compliance that they have to be not so many years old, so we replace a few every year. Uh, bunker gear is the same thing. We have standards to keep up with. We got to replace a few every year. Um, you can ask me any, any questions on those three so far? No? Okay, we'll move on to the remodel bathroom. This was something that was in last year's. Um, I had an engineer help me come up with a number, and that number was way too low. When I started to go out for the actual project to bid, the numbers came in much higher. So now I have a new number that we should be able to get the project done. That's what that next one is. Um, number five, I'm not really... That's what that next one is. Um number five, I'm not really sure how that made it back in here. That was from last year. That can be removed. The seven thousand imager, that can be taken out. The Opticom is a project that I am requesting a grant for, that hundred and seventy-five thousand or a hundred and forty-seven thousand is the total project. If we don't get the grant, we can do considerably less. I'm just worried about Main Street. So that's in there, I think sort of for a placeholder for that grant that has been submitted. We should know in the next two months if we get that or not. Then we move on to low pressure nozzles. Our nozzles are fairly old. This is just new technology that we're trying to few on our first out truck. Battery powered vent fan, we, so we have a few in here that I'm gonna talk about that are older technology that we've had for, you know, ten, twelve, fifteen years. Gas powered equipment that is still running, but we have quite a few that aren't running at this point. This fan I'm talking about replacing doesn't run currently. We've taken it to our mechanic, we've taken to a separate mechanic and it just, they can't get it up and going because it's too old to get parts. Training dummy, this is for the ALS project we've been starting on. This would be a dummy for medical, not for dragging around fire, but for actually in-house like I don't wanna say cleaner, but for ALS procedures. Rescue board for patient care is something we've been kind of working on too with the confined space stuff that we've been sort of tasked with. This is another thing we think we need. Then we get into these next few are kind of the same, the battery saws I've just talked about. Um safety harness for confined space stuff. The SCBA's is at a hundred and thirty thousand. We need to replace fourteen packs that are twenty-two years old at this point. I've also put in a grant for that. Um I should know in the next couple of months if we're getting that also. If we don't get a grant for that, we still need that whole dollar amount to replace those packs. They're very old.
So, so Chief.
Yep.
How old did you say they were?
Uh some are twenty-two years old. Some are like eighteen, some are twenty-two. Their SCBA's are the things we wear into fires, self-contained breathing apparatus. And then we go to uh, after that is hose replacement. That's just kind of an ongoing thing also that every year we have, we have to test our hose. Some of it fails, so we replace them every year. Any questions?
Although I'm looking at twenty-six, the one for the fire station.
Yes.
We ain't talking about that today.
So that is something that I'm going to bring up in the next couple, in the next month. Um I have a proposal to show you um potentially why we need a second station. So we can, that, right now, that's just a dollar amount. I think that dollar amount is too low. But when I bring you that discussion presentation, I will also talk to you about how we can get money. Uh right now, it's kind of, I don't wanna say it's backwards, but I, I don't wanna invest money into figuring out how much it's gonna cost to build a station if you guys don't wanna build a station. So in the next month, I'll bring you a presentation on if you wanna do that or not.
That's question Chief. Number two. Are these head?
Yes.
About seven thousand dollars?
Yes. Yeah, they're, they're a lot um more robust and better than just what you would get at Walmart by any means. You know, they're in. Yep, that, yeah, there's costs, there's costs more than ours. We, we buy cheaper ones than they do. Not by much, I will give you that.
Okay, for the streets department infrastructure, we have our the five-year capital improvement plan. We always include five hundred for street improvements, one hundred thousand for sidewalks and curbs, and two hundred thousand for stormwater and drainage. New this year is the Memorial Drive multipath and the streets lights down Memorial and Dr. Kelly will explain.
So we're just trying to beautify that area and you know how if you're heading southbound on Memorial, there's the multi-use path on the county put in on the right-hand side. This would be mirroring that path on the left-hand side as you're heading south. It would also do away with all those little green strips that nobody seems to wanna maintain as their homeowners. Also looked into putting streetlights on Memorial, like nice, large ones that can a lever out over the roadway and Duke Energy would install those. That's, that's their quote with the wires undergrounded instead of looping. It would be cheaper to loop the wires, but there's already so much visual noise on that road. I don't think you want the wires if you wanna go with streetlights.
You want a multipath on both sides of Memorial?
That's what the proposal is, yes.
Why do we need that?
That there's a lot of residential foot traffic. I don't know how often you go down.
Like every day.
The kids play out there. That gives them more options to ride their bikes. They don't have to keep crossing Memorial to get to the path. And it also would just make it more aesthetically pleasing. It's a, it's a gateway into the city from the south, so trying to make it as pretty as possible.
It, it's a lot larger than like a regular sidewalk though, so is there even space? Or are we gonna be encroaching on, you know, people's yards more and?
So there's the current sidewalk, so you have the road back of curb, which there really isn't one. Then you have the couple feet of green space that looks terrible and then you have the sidewalk. So it would take the sidewalk and the green space towards the road. It wouldn't encroach into yards.
Okay. And then what about, cause I noticed a lot of people kind of use that multipath that's there now almost as like a driveway. And so there's usually cars on it. Um you know, they extend their driveway basically into that portion, so. Is there kind of a safety concern with wanting kids to ride their bike on that when there's more residents on that other side and driveways or, or has that been looked into yet?
I suppose you could adopt an ordinance not allowing people to use that as a driveway. We could enfor, look at enforcing that.
I'm, I'm confused. You said they're using what for driveway?
What I always see when I drive down is, so you know the, their driveways usually go into Memorial.
City side or the countryside?
The city side.
Okay.
The driveways usually go into Memorial and so you, you see cars that start in the driveways, but then they go into, almost to the road portion with that um where the multipath is right now. I mean, I've seen actual cars drive down it, which they know better than that, but I have seen that.
Yeah, I've seen it too. And I think i- i- it's illegal, it's wrong. I, I think what they doing is if they pull out of their driveway and the traffic is on Memorial, they're going to the closest stop sign to get on the road instead of pulling out in the traffic across the green space. Instead of pulling out in the traffic, they're using the pathway to get to the stop sign and then they pull out in the road. But just driving down the pathway, just no. Which is ille, illegal, no matter how they're doing it. I thought you was insinuating that they're just using the pathway as a, as a, as a road.
No.
Oh, okay. Yeah. I think what uh, I think what David Kelly was trying to do here is uh, we talk about it a lot in our CRA meetings about how, what we're trying to do to Memorial. Memorial is a very busy road and it is a, a gateway into Seab- Most of us know there's three-way to get to Sebring, twenty-seven Memorial and seventeen. And so we're trying to clean up Memorial.
Right.
And I think that's what she's trying to do and she's trying to put a the pathway on what we call the city side. Because like she said, there are a lot of residents that is not taking care of the green space, which they don't supposed to, cause it's the city's responsibility. And so I guess she's saying if we widen it some, we won't have worry about all that green space that's not being maintained by.
I also wanna add that the current sidewalk is just terrible.
It is.
So would there be a curb between the road and this multipathway or not?
That's a great question. I, I don't have an answer for that.
Help me out when you say curb.
Some, some kind of different, you know, a, a, what do you call it, like a visual something to show.
So if you, uh, I mean, looking at it, my, my opinion, I think the, the streetlights is a really good option. I think that's for the health and safety of everybody. When you start getting into widening that sidewalk, uh which the sidewalk does need, does need to get fixed. But it's really hard for me to believe and that we, it was searched out. I've never seen a road that one side of the right of way is maintained by a county and the other side's maintained by the city. And the statement was is that, oh, yeah, yeah. Property on both sides. Well, so does US twenty-seven. So that road is the right of way. It's their responsibility, it's their responsibility to maintain that. As far as the, the, the right of way has to get maintained by the city, it's not in your code, the, the resident maintains it. It, we, the city maintains it because they want it to look better in the main thoroughfares, right? So it's an additional above and beyond. Problem is, say you get there, some of their, their property lines, from what I'm looking on the property appraiser, it is uh, it is pretty close to that sidewalk. So the thing is, is that when you go ahead and you build that sidewalk bigger, there may be a good chance that you're gonna have to encroach into that little bit of space where the, the stormwater would run off the street if there was any, cause it's pitched. You know, you got the crown of the road pitches over to the side. You're just gonna have less space for that um, for the stormwater to run off. And like Brittany brought up a good point stating, you know, we already have one on the other side. I think you, you know, and I think having uh asphalt four foot wide, I don't think it serves a good, you know, four or five foot wide, I don't think it serves a good purpose. What the multipath on the other side does, it would need, you, you should have um the sidewalk get replaced, but I think going and doing all that, there's a also a difference amount, amount of houses that come across like as far as um that actually a good amount of houses on the west side, the entrance to their house goes onto the streets, whatever street is there, instead of coming in off Memorial, which who wants to back out of their driveway into Memorial, right? So it makes sense. But um, but yeah, I think that's, that would be the issue, that if you try to expand that, you're gonna minimize the area where the water runs off to and that'd be an issue. All right?
I do wanna point out that we did have uh a quote done for replacing just the sidewalk and it was more expensive.
And if we don't.
Right, cause it's concrete opposed to asphalt. It was, it was a higher cost.
And certain area of it needs to be replaced, especially down there with Duke Energy. It's all cracking up. And it's been like that for a while.
No, it wouldn't. It would run uh the whole length from, was that seventeen south to where the sidewalk ends.
What, what, what's Ben Hitz Street? No, it goes a little past Ben Hitz. It goes down to uh.
Okay, yeah, then that's correct. Correct, yes. Yeah, I mean, we, it's not a hill I'm worth willing to die on here for this multi-use path, but.
Can you use CRA funds for that?
I would like to, can I make a comment? So the infrastructure fund is restricted to certain projects, which this qualifies for. At the end of last year, we had five point nine million in unspent funds. We brought in, we predict we're gonna bring in one point seven million. After all of the total expenditures in this fund are two point two million, we'll still have five point four million in the fund to spend.
Are there other things that were in the budget that we already talked about that could be put into the?
Yes, we're gonna look into the um, some of the park stuff that we were talking about, so we can most likely I'll have to look at the rules, see if I can pull that in. Uh Parks and Rec, we always have the FERDAP grants in here just as a holding place in case we receive a grant. And I would like to point out, we rece, received the, or sent in the commencement package for the MLK Junior Sports Complex, FERDAP grant. We were waiting on a thirty-year title search and a survey, so that's been submitted. So the only new thing on here is the AC replacement for the community center and that will maybe reimburse by a grant. That's the end. So what is our direction for this? Are, am I? What am I, yeah?
Correct. Yeah, absolutely. It's, you know. Sure.
So you all are good with this budget as it stands? That's my direction that I need. Yeah. Okay, okay. Okay, so we'll probably schedule another budget meeting in August at some point, so we'll keep you posted.
Yeah, Mayor, I have a question in reference to the board, uh the, the budget meeting we just had here. You know, there was information in there about the Sheriff Department. Are we planning on talking about that again before we approve the budget in September?
Just the contract. Oh, no, no, I haven't received anything since Thursday night.
So we, we're, we're instructing Dr. Kelly to, to bring us some information as soon as possible, but we looking at what, a month and a half? Well, I just, I, I guess what I'm saying there is that she was asking, are we okay with the budget? And I'm saying, because of that sheriff information in there, I'm not okay with it. So I was hoping that we can have some information come forth before, some, in more information about the Sheriff Department to come forth before September. That's all I'm asking.
Well, I, I appreciate that and I would say that regardless of the information that we get, we could get all the information imaginable. We're still not gonna be able to stand up a PD before October first, so I'm assuming that the current contract that was proposed is is gonna move forward. It was for four years.
No.
Aside from um what Councilmember Mercur asked him, what would be cut if we stayed at the same rate, um that I haven't received any information on that question. Interesting.
Motion to adjourn.